And CM, thank you. Welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board meeting of May 6, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Media and also by Google Meet. I'd ask everyone to silence all electronic devices at this time, please. The format for tonight's hearing is, any parties wishing to make comment and testify on matters before the Board, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. The applicant or their representative will address the Board first and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. Members of the Board may ask questions before, during, or after the applicant's presentation. Following questions or comments from the Board, we'll open up the hearing to the general public and any town officials that are here. And again, that would include reading any or commenting on written proposals or written comments we receive. Any comments or questions, we'll go through the Chair. Following that, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to address any concerns or questions that may have arisen from those speaking on this matter. At that point, the Board can consider continuing the public hearing. We'll move to close the public hearing, and if the Board so chooses to close the public hearing, they may proceed to deliberate or continue the proposal. This, tonight, are special permits, and they all will require four votes. First thing, we'll call to order, and now we'll open up the reorganization of the Board for the 2025-26 year, and I'll open up nominations for the office of the chairperson. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Shannon.
Been nominated by Mr. O'Neill in second and by Ms. Greenwell and Al. Are there any other nominations?
I'm moved that we close nominations.
Motion to close the nominations in favor of Ms. O'Neill. All those in favor? Okay, and on Mr. Shannon for the chairperson. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everyone, for your confidence in me. We'll also open up nominations for the position of clerk. Is there a nomination for the position of clerk to the Board?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Greenwell.
Ms. Greenwell's been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Neill. Any other further nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Close the nominations for the position of clerk. On closing nominations, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwell?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And yes, congratulations. Thank you, everyone. Okay, before us this evening, we have 153 Hill Street, case 25-9, request for special permit under section 5.4.4 of the zoning bylaw. I'll read into the record the public hearing, and this will be continued. Notice is hereby given, the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on May 6, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. On the request of Mary McNeil and John McNeil, case 25-9, with respect to property located at 153 Hill Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the general residence G zoning district, the hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw section 5.4.4 to construct in addition to the side of the existing residence that increases the nonconforming nature of the property. The structure is pre-existing nonconforming in area infredge. The proposed addition would create a new nonconformity in the right-hand side setback. Due to a proposed change to section 5.4 in the annual town meeting warrant, this hearing will be opened and immediately continued. The proposed zoning change would change the relief required. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the Board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the Board. Please join file with this application in the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by email, calmdev@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Valente Tate, a motion to close the public hearing?
To continue the hearing.
To continue the hearing? All right, thank you.
Second.
Motion has been made by Matt and seconded by Shannon. Al, we're closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Excuse me, on continuing the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
So...
Shannon, I'll get that in a minute, yep.
To June 3rd.
Yes, and that will be continued to June 3rd here at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. at 7:00 p.m. Okay, so that is closed. Continued. Another case before us, we have two cases that were continued from April 1st. It's 163 Dean Street, case 25-7, request for variance under section 10.2.2 of the Norwood zoning bylaw. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. David Hearn Jr. of Gellman and Cabral, 30 Walpole Street here in Norwood. I sent a note to the zoning department this afternoon informing Ms. Jones that we were going to request continuance of this matter. You know that last time we were here, we had a good discussion of the issues, and we are still in the process of trying to come up with a solution or some material. There are a couple of issues that have come up, and I think it would be useful not to take our time tonight, your time tonight, but to continue it to the June meeting, which is June 3rd, I believe, at 7 o'clock. And we would ask for that, and that's what I wrote to Ms. Jones this afternoon to make her know that that's what we were thinking of doing.
Okay, there's been a request by the applicant to continue this case 25-7 of 163 Dean Street to June 3rd, 7:00 p.m., 275 Prospect Street, the Norwood Senior Center. Is there a motion to continue?
Still moved.
Moved by Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Matt, on continuing the hearing to June 3rd?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
The hearing is continued. The next case is Dean Street, case 25-8, request for variance under section 10.2.2 of the zoning bylaw. This also was continued from the April 1st, 2025 meeting.
Same request, Mr. Chairman, June 3rd, 7:00 p.m. here at the Senior Center and on Google Meet.
Okay. There's been a request by the applicant to continue this to our next meeting, June 3rd, 275 Prospect Street, at 7:00 p.m., and also on Google Meet.
So moved.
Moved by Shannon. Is there a second? Seconded by Matt. Matt?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And this is continued. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
On that, Mr. Chairman, one thing. When that was heard, was it the same, the regular panel, or did we have somebody sitting in on that?
Dan was sitting in, but Al has reviewed the tapes and was ready to pull and roll.
So everybody who's on that is on notice of the date. Thank you.
Right, Al? Yep, you're right.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. So we have before us, there's only one public hearing notice. Was it required to have these modifications noticed?
They were noticed. We should have...
Okay, I can make do with it. Okay, this is 707 Nippon Street, case 25-11, request for special permit modification, case 22-25. Notice is hereby given, the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing, okay, on February 11th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m.
So I can pull up the public hearing notices for the first two. My apologies for that.
No, I don't think it was your thing. I just saw this and crinkled it. Just the one. Don't need all three. They were, we noticed, right? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. This is a rather lengthy form.
There we go.
That's okay. There you go.
This is a goofy way to pull it up, but do you want me to go ahead and read it?
Yeah, would you mind reading that then? Al, thank you.
Yeah, so this is a notice of a public hearing on May 6, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, on the request of the Norwood Golf, Inc., case number 25-10, for property located at 707 Nippon Street, Norwood...
Just, we're gonna do 25-11 first.
Okay.
Okay, yep, thank you. So the case 25-11.
So 25-11, property located, same location, 707 Nippon Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, 02062, map 18 block 1, lots 34, 35, 41, and 42, in the single residence S zoning district. The applicant requests modification to a special... So the other public hearing notice was 22... Just pull that one up.
25.
25 for modification of the parking lot to reorient parking spaces and... Sorry, I... Let me read the actual public hearing notice rather than reciting what it is, because I... That's the requirement. Okay. All right. So for case 25-11, the applicant requests modification of a special permit decision to case 22-25 to change the layout of the parking lot and handicap access ramp. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw may be considered by the Board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their vote views known to the Board.
All right.
Sorry about that.
So the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, David Hearn Jr. of Gellman and Cabral at 30 Walpole Street. I am appearing on behalf of Norwood Golf on all of the matters before you this evening. There are three of them, I believe. The one that we just heard about is, relates to a decision of the Board in late 2022, case number 22-25, which had to do with the expansion of a parking lot on the property. That was approved. The parking lot was constructed, and subsequent to that, it came to the attention of the building department, among others, that three spaces in that parking area were constructed slightly differently from how they were laid out on the plan that was submitted to this Board back in December of 2022. And the cases, the, I'm sorry, the spots in question are two handicap spots and one short-term parking spot. They were originally laid out to be... And do we have the plan for this one, if you can put it up?
Yes.
They were originally laid out to be angled in to the side of the building. In the course of construction, it was discovered that there were some issues regarding slope, regarding a curb that was, I think, part of the foundation of the building. And there were discussions, Mark Schubert, who the former building inspector was, is acting part-time as a building inspector for the department, he was there on inspection, and there was a discussion with the owner to the effect that it would make sense in terms of the layout of these lots, these spots rather, and the, to deal with the slope for the ramp, for the handicapped access. It would make sense if those were turned 90 degrees so that they head in from, say, the Nippon Street side, rather than going sideways into the building. If I can show a gear perhaps. The original layout is shown in red, so they would have been here heading into the side of the building.
Excuse me, excuse me a second. Can we blow that up?
Yep.
Yeah, just so we can see a little better.
So in red is how it was originally laid out. Handicap spot, open area, handicap spot, walkway, and there was a temporary spot. It was discovered that because of the slope of the ramp over here, curb and all that, that it made more sense in terms of accessibility and construction to shift them so they are, as shown in black. Handicap spot here, open area for access and mobility. Handicap spot here, temporary or short-term spot here. So they angled in directly in coming, say, coming from Nippon Street as opposed to being turned 90 degrees. That is the change that was made. It was made in the course of construction with the, really, suggestion of Mr. Schubert at the time. Unfortunately, it didn't get memorialized in the records of inspections or in the final issuance of certificates from the building department. So it's been called to our attention. It also was part of the site plan approval that the planning board gave early in 2023. So the remedy for it is to request from you and from the planning board, modification of the plans for that project, the parking lot project, to allow for the change as described there, as shown on your plans, from what was, what is shown on red to what is shown in black. 90-degree shift of those parking spots. We appeared before the planning board last week, and they voted to grant the modification request with respect to that. That's the only modification we're asking for on this.
They just require one parking, handicap parking spot?
There are two.
I see one. Where's the other one?
On either side of...
On the other side?
Here?
Yeah.
One there. That allows for an open area for somebody getting out of a car.
Okay.
And we're going to go up into the park and into the walkway into the building. So that was, the 2022-25 case dealt with expansions of the parking...
Do you have questions now?
No, no, no.
Other one?
I will open the hearing up. The applicant is speaking now. Thank you. And the shaded area, is that the building that we approved? Not the shaded area, the area with the cross?
This is, no, this is pavement.
That's pavement, okay. All right. Okay.
That, at the time that we were before you, case 22-25, there was no proposal for the building, for the addition to the building. There was an outline of a possible building that showed up on the plan that went into the planning board for the parking lot expansion, the site plan approval. But, and in the presentation of the case before the planning board, I made it clear that we were not looking for relief or approval with respect to a building. It was only there as to let them know that we're thinking down the road of possibly adding onto the back of the building. So that was also clarified with the planning board last Monday, a week ago. That the decision they made does not involve a building addition. Their decision was only as to the parking area, as was yours, in case 22-25. We get to the building addition in the next case, but I think we were taking these one at a time.
I understand now. Is that it, Mr. Hearn?
Yeah, and that was the, that was the issue that Mr. Pelletier cited us on as something that had to be cleared up. And if you recall, when we were before you, this was originally scheduled, the main event that we have, that's the third case to be heard tonight, that was originally scheduled for hearing early in February. Because of an issue in the zoning department with the giving notice, the mailed notice, it was continued to the meeting in March, and at that time, the building inspector had raised some questions about these issues, the parking spots that we're talking about now, the addition to the building, some landscaping issues. So we have addressed those with the planning board, and we're taking them sort of in some, I think, in order, chronological order now, with you.
Any questions from the Board?
And these are already constructed?
They are.
So we're just fixing something that...
Right, we're going back to fix something that was done in good faith and with the suggestion of Mr. Schubert.
They make more sense this way, actually.
I'm sorry?
They make more sense this way.
Well, and that's what it turned out to be, yeah.
Yeah.
One question, Mr. Chair. So you were referring, so there were two handicap spaces previously. We maintain the two handicap spaces. Are we adding another parking space? Or was the temporary...
That was in there. That was already in there.
Where was the temporary parking space in relation to the red handicaps? Because red is old, black is built, correct?
Right, top. We had one, two, three. It was up here.
Okay. So the number of parking spaces has remained the same?
There's no loss or addition to the number of spaces? Yeah.
Thank you. There's a few plans that are referenced in the December 22 decision. The only nonconformity with the ASBIL is with respect to the orientation of these three spots. With respect to this one decision we're talking about, everything else is in full conformity.
The only issue you folks are dealing with, right?
Yeah. And then condition number eight said all construction work must be approved by local authorities and completed prior to use. So this issue wasn't expressly identified in the approval by the building department, but it was, it was constructed this way in the ASBIL in consultation with them.
It came up as an issue when Mr. Schubert was doing one of his inspections, and there was an issue with a curb and the slope. So they put their heads together, and the solution was turn it 90 degrees, your slope will be better going in, and they will still fit in there. It's not adding any asphalt, it's not taking away any spaces that we had petitioned for, not adding to them. It's just a, one of these in-the-field discoveries that needs to be fixed. Sometimes we're able to deal with those administratively, but in this case, it was decided we needed to go, come back to you on that, and to go to the planning board.
Yeah, and then that was my follow-up. So I, just to reiterate what I think I understand, the third condition was submit to the planning board for site plan approval. So that's, planning board has already approved the modification?
They did.
For that site plan?
Right.
Okay. So we're kind of the second step for this...
Yeah, it's the timing.
Yeah.
We got to the planning board last week, which was their last meeting until sometime in June because of town meeting and everything. They lose a couple of dates. So, and the Memorial Day holiday. So we got, we went to them when we were able to, they were able to hear.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Who are the issues with the plantings that they're looking for modification?
Plantings came up in the, in terms of, well, in terms of the modification?
Yes.
The issue that was flagged was that some of the plantings were different from what was on the schedule of plantings that was approved by the planning board. And some of them were not, some of the proposed plantings weren't available. My client had put in actually more of certain things than was required. This came up as an issue only in the last couple of months, and so he has, once the weather got better, before it started raining all the time, he has put in a lot of plants on the property that conform. When we discussed it with the planning board last week, one of their, and they, it wasn't so much we were looking for a modification, as we acknowledged we had to get the approved plants in there. And so most of them have been put in, Mr. Power, our engineer, can speak to that better than I can. I happened to be there yesterday and saw a lot of plants, but there was still more to go in. And one of the conditions that the planning board had in their decision last week was that within three months, to allow time for everything to go in, we will have a landscape architect come in who has already reviewed the plans, but the landscape architect will come in and check off that what's been done is what was required by the planning board and approved in the planning board's decisions. She'll be able to certify that that's been done so that we can submit that to the department, to the planning department. So that's where we are with the planning board on that, and they approved that. It was, you know, that is more of a, the list of plants and all often is more a question for the planning board than this board, but we want you to know we're going to do what is required. Most of it already has been, but I think there were a few things my client was telling me, he had hoped to get in by now, weren't going to be certified by now, to get them in by now, but as far as I know, we've had nonstop rain the last few days, pretty much, and he hasn't been able to get them in. But an awful lot. Tim, is there anything to add on that? A lot of stuff has gone in.
Yeah, most of it's gone in.
Just your name and address for the record, sir.
Sure. Tim Power, civil engineer in 18 Glendale Road, just down the street from here. I actually walked it today to see the progress. We talked about a couple of things still missing, but he's substantially in compliance now, just a few more plants, so hopefully as the weather breaks, he can acquire them. I think the nursery he went to was short a couple, so he's got to go back and get a few more and put a couple trees in the ground.
Thank you, Al. Okay, at this point, I'll open up to the people that are here at the Senior Center first, and then they'll open it up to those people that are on Google Meet.
Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Yes.
We're only discussing the modification request with respect to the parking lot?
Of the two parking spots that are shown there. It was originally proposed in red, but at the suggestion at the time, and the building inspector was to move those, I will say, horizontal, vertically instead of horizontally and 93. So that's the only issue before us right now.
Three spots.
Three.
Two handicap and one short-term.
Yeah, one, yeah, and one additional one. But, this, yeah, just a minute. So the third, where's the third spot, the one to the left of it?
Yeah, closest to the building.
Yeah. And then what's the date on that, that plan?
This plan was the one. Recently submitted.
April 2nd?
Yeah.
Okay, I have one from December. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, yes, please, name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Palmetiere. I live at 18 Ridge Road. I have just a couple of clarifying questions. The, do I understand correctly that the two modification requests are related to the special permits, case 22-25 and 23-26?
This one is specifically just to 22-25, and it's the alteration of the parking and what's been explained.
And is that also, does that permit also govern the lighting and landscaping plans?
No, they were not cited on that, right?
I think that there were findings in that decision pertaining to the landscaping.
The 22 decision recites...
Yeah, but the point of the matter is that the violation that's before us tonight is on the parking, correct? Al, that's the violation is on the parking. And Mr. Pelletier?
The request for modification is on the parking. There is a violation in the landscaping which the owner has committed to correcting by installing the approved landscaping.
And my question is, Mr. Pelletier said that the only violation that Mr. Pelletier put before us is the parking, right? There might be a violation on the lighting, but that's not what is before us?
This case was brought to the ZBA by the applicant in response to Mr. Pelletier, not by the building commissioner. So the building commissioner issued a notice of violation that...
So the building commissioner issued a notice of violation that included the landscaping as an issue along with these non-conformities with the site plan.
Okay. So do you question the plantings? Yep.
Right. Well, this, I'll give you the reason that I'm asking and why I'm wondering if it's related. I'm wondering if it's the case that it's within the ZBA's authority to augment the special permits to add conditions and safeguards. Specifically, can the ZBA require modifications of the lighting and landscaping plans as a condition of granting the request for modification? Does it have that authority to, it's being asked to modify two different things. Can, as conditions of those modifying, can you add as conditions?
In the event of a breach of violation, under any terms of condition, we may revoke the plans approved in that case.
So, in other words, unless there's a violation of what else is spelled out in the special permit, it can't be modified?
Just have to read, just give me a moment, Mr. Pelletier. Okay, so Mr. Pelletier just highlights in his letter to us, the parking and the landscaping. There is not any violation according to his letter regarding lighting. So we're just going to talk about the parking and the landscaping.
So they can't be changed as a condition of, for example, let's say the lighting is going to be shadowed different on the handicap spots now that they're oriented differently the way the lights come off the building as opposed to when they were opened. I'm just thinking, like, could there be ancillary effects that need modification?
What's before us is from Mr. Pelletier, and what the modification is for the parking lot and the planting. So if you have an issue with the plantings or the parking, right now, that is not before us.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. Yes, please approach, state your name and address for the record.
Anne Mackowitz, 24 Cross Street. I live in the midst of where there's a mechanics business on Cross Street, and it's very unpleasant. I saw in the paper, this is a question, that elm trees were going to be planted?
I think that comes through us. Dave, what I'm going to ask you to do, because there's a lot of people here, instead of having you come up and back and forth, you and the engineer, please write down all of the current concerns and questions. I'll write them down also, and then we'll have him address them. Go ahead.
Unless you've got disease-resistant elm trees, which are more expensive, there is Dutch elm disease in the town. I've had to take down two trees. They need to be inoculated at a certain age, and it's not cheap. It's over $300 per tree. So hopefully, whatever elm trees you've got in there, you bought the right ones.
Thank you, thank you. Dave, David, David. I have a letter from the building inspector, and this is what we're going to go by. We're going to talk about the landscaping, and we're going to talk about the parking.
Mr. Chair, I have the letter from a little, I have the letter.
Thank you, please sit down, Mr. Hearn.
All right.
Anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak? Yes, you can sit there, Ms. Donahue, if you'd like. That's fine.
Oh, thank you, that'll save a lot of time.
Thank you.
My big question is, in procedure, it seems to me that the way that we run things is, before it goes to site plan approval to the planning board, that we have to adhere to, or we have to have a board of appeal decision.
We have that decision from, in this case, that decision came from case 22-25, and we had approved the parking as was there. And then it goes to this planning board in regards to the site plan regarding the plantings. And I know that's what you want to talk about, but we're going to hear people out, and then we'll address it at the end there.
But then the next question is, I went to the planning board hearing last week, and they said that really customarily, the decisions made, and then, but what happens now if you don't agree with this? Then that has to be discussed at the next hearing?
If we don't vote to modify it, then the parking spots, they'll have to file a new plan with the building department, and then they'll probably come back to us again.
And start over again?
Well, in regards to just the violations, which is the parking and the somewhat, but I think the landscaping's been planned out by the planning board.
But then the next question is, at the last, at the planning board hearing last week, Mr. Hearn himself raised the question about this, no, this doesn't concern the point, the building shown on the plan. Could you please explain that, what?
We approved the plan with the parking at the time. That would not be the purview of the planning board because it comes under special permit, that is the authority of the ZBA. But the planning board has site plan review in some cases, and in this case, they kicked in site plan review. So that is why it went to ZBA, got approved, went to planning, they approved it, and then, as Mr. Hearn stated, the building inspector at the time, the building department, made the suggestion to move those spots as shown in this plan without notifying, I believe, without notifying their attorney, who probably would have said, you can't do that without the ZBA approval, and that's why we're here.
So how, do you remember about use variances in the past? What use variances?
But this isn't a use variance.
I know. This is an alleged extension of a non-conforming use, right?
Right.
And, but now, on the next hearing, if you approve that, then this is a single resident zone.
But as you know, it's non-conforming, and it's grandfathered in, so they do have rights under the zoning bylaw and under the state zoning law, and that's what's before us.
What is allowed in is what is shown on the 22 plan.
It's a legal non-conforming use, and they do have the right under our zoning, whether we like it or not, to come before us and seek this. And right now, we're just trying to correct a error probably created by the town when the building inspector at the time told them to move it, and nobody consulted with the attorney, and no one consulted with the planning department, and no one consulted with the ZBA.
So thank you for letting me ask my questions. I'll ask more in the next section.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyone else on this matter? Yeah, I'd like to hear from everyone else, and I'll let you come back up again. Hold on, Google Meet, hold on. Yes, sir, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Craig Reiki, 585 Naposet Street. Thank you, sir. I'm a partial for the MPT. And as I'm looking at this, it looks to me that the handicap parking spaces, to get out of them, you're backing into the dispense pumps. Looks like a safety hazard tonight. And I think the old layout was preferable, and then maybe, instead of turning them 90 degrees, turn them 45 degrees, so that you're actually backing away from the pumps, not into the pumps? Thank you.
I'll have the engineer address that when everyone's finished speaking. That's a suggestion. Yes, ma'am.
Anne Mackowitz, 24 Cross Street. You mentioned the word grandfathering. How does, how does a grandfathering work with this property?
If the property existed?
No, I understand. What year was the grandfathering done?
Pre-existing zoning. So anything that pre-existed zoning can remain as a legal use, as grandfathered in, in this pre-existing zoning.
So what bylaws do they have to conform to?
The ones that they're coming to before us tonight.
The current ones?
You're right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone on Google Meet, please state your name and address for the record? Anyone on Google Meet?
Yep, my name is Carolyn Barrows. I am at 576 Naposet Street in Norwood, and I'm a town meeting member, District 8, and I have several questions. My first question, Mr. Shan, is I am concerned that you have misstated, I think I heard differently from the lawyer, than something that you keep stating over and over again. My understanding of what the lawyer said, and so I'm asking for a point of clarification, is that the lawyer said they made a decision on-site during construction to alter the parking spaces, and then were followed up with a citation by the building inspector. They, my understanding was not that the building inspector instructed them to do so, and I think that's a really important piece of information to clarify.
Building inspector, the building?
So if you could clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll answer that question. The building inspector at the time was Mr. Schubert, and Mr. Schubert was on-site with the property owner and suggested that they move the parking spaces the way that they did in this plan, and they did that. Now, should they have come before the planning department and this board? Yes. But they didn't consult with the attorney, and the owner took it that the building inspector had the authority to do that. They were lying. The new building inspector has cited that, and that's why this is before us this evening.
Okay, so we don't have it from the actual old building inspector that was on-site that he said this? We're just trusting that he said this based on what the owners were saying, correct?
Can Attorney Hearn clarify?
Yeah, I can clarify this.
Yeah, Mr. Hearn will clarify this.
Mr. Schubert had retired as a building commissioner, but he was working part-time, and he was not there as the building commissioner. Mr. Pelletier was in office, but Mr. Schubert is one of the assistant building inspectors. He had responsibility that day to inspect this site, and he has authority as an assistant building inspector, whatever he's called, working a couple of days a week. So I wanted to be clear, and I appreciate this person's comments, I didn't catch her last name, but we built this in 2023, right? Sometime around 2023, late 2023, by the time we had all the approvals. Mr. Pelletier did not complain about this or issue a letter to us until, I got it March 10th, a letter dated March 10th.
So, Ms. Barrows, Ms. Barrows, please, you asked Mr. Hearn to clarify it, he's clarifying it. Please let him finish.
We finished clarifying it, Mr. Shan. I'm hoping for my second question.
No, he hasn't, no, he hasn't.
Mr. Shan, please stop interrupting me.
He has, no, you've interrupted him, Ms. Barrows. Can we mute Ms. Barrows, please?
Ms. Chan?
Wow, Mr. Shan.
Okay.
I want to clarify
Yes.
That this is not a case where I think it was suggested that we did something and were immediately cited. We did something two and a half years ago, roughly, and then it came to the attention of Mr. Pelletier that there was a problem, and I think it came, I don't know how it came to his attention, I have some ideas of how it might have, but then he said, you've got to fix that. And we told him how we thought we'd fix it. That's why we're here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hearn. Continue, Ms. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Shan. Okay, so would, can we assume that the building inspector at the time would have known it was the client's responsibility to go to the zoning board? Isn't that part of the job of the building inspector?
He's not here to comment, to answer that question.
But do we assume that a building inspector would know that any changes in plans would have to go before the boards?
You know what assume means in life.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because what I'm, what my concern is a pattern of behavior of not meeting the expectations of what they set before the boards when they make plans and get approvals. So I'm just trying to stop at that. Additionally, I'm seeing, I'm hearing that this, that these plans were approved in 2023, and it is 2025, and they're just now addressing the planting issues on their properties. So two years later, they're finally, they're finally adhering to the plans that were put forward in the first place. Is that correct?
That was resolved at the last planning board meeting. I'm not sure if it's correct. That site plan falls under the purview of the planning board, so that would be the question for the next planning board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Google Meet that would like to comment on this matter? Okay. Yes, Mr. Hearn?
With respect to some of the questions?
Yes, please, please.
Ms. Mackowitz, I'm sorry, Mr. Palmetier, I think, referred to lights, and that somehow the lights might act differently with respect to the spots, parking spots, if we turn them 90 degrees. The lights are the same lights on the side of the building as were proposed. They didn't shift or get changed when the parking spots were shifted 90 degrees. They're the same as they were. With respect to Ms. Mackowitz's comment about Dutch elm disease, the elm trees are the ones that the planning board told us to put in. They are a native species, I believe, and they are the ones that we were told to put in. So we're doing it. Ms. Donahue has referred to use variances. We haven't had use variances in many years. And I can think of a case I tried 30 years ago where a use variance issue was raised, and it was made clear that use variance had been abolished long before that. With respect to Ms. Mackowitz and the question on grandfathering, the property was previously a small ice cream store or something like that, which was a non-conforming use within the single residence district. So non-conforming uses can be changed with the approval of the zoning board, if the zoning board makes appropriate findings. And this, that ice cream store became a gas station sometime, I believe it was in the mid-1960s. And so it was a non-conforming use. The change in non-conforming use was authorized in the mid-60s, and we have had a few changes since then. So I just want to clarify the history on that.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, do you want to address the issue regarding the safety? Would it be better to have these handicap spots angling in rather than having people with disabilities attempting to back out?
I think we have enough space to make the turn. Even if people are at the gas station, if it was turned 90 degrees, you still do have cars lined up behind you, you have a little bit more room, but there's, we're comfortable there's sufficient room to make the turn, albeit a little more carefully in the pass-by lane that's there. If there's no one at the gas station, you actually have more space than you did on the previous one.
Are you a civil engineer?
I am a civil engineer.
So is your recommendation to this board that they remain?
Absolutely, and the bigger reason, which is one of the reasons that was discussed in the fields, was that on the bottom side of that last space on the red, there's some existing concrete that's drastically sloped up to the building to meet the curb, the sidewalk that's there. So I'm not sure those original alignment would be as compliant as they could have been if they're turned the way they are today.
Craig, does that help answer your question?
Not really. I don't think this space, there's not enough room for a car to go parallel right now. I think anybody that uses that gas station knows that.
Would you?
What I would like is a measurement from the back of a vehicle parked at the handicap spot to a car parked at the dispenser right behind it. I don't think this car is placed. I mean, I know that this. And I say this as somebody that parks in handicap spots every day. This is a bad spot, as it is right now.
Does it meet the requirement for handicap spots according to our bylaws and according to turning angles?
The drive aisle, and we're using the edge of the concrete, and I can dig up dimension here in a minute, has enough room for a one-way to get in and out, so if it was a one-way parking, it can back out and go.
That'd be the only way they could go out. They couldn't go out the other way, right?
Correct.
So we have to have some kind of indication regarding a one-way, right? Some kind of signage to alert people to that?
If that's what we have to put up there, yes. And I guess I also want to add that, you know, we had strived to get the most compliant space you can when you get out and for maneuverability, with the assumption it's easier to drive the car than it is maybe on the ground. So the reason, it's a flatter surface, it's a flatter space to get in and out of the building than the other orientation, in a place that had nothing signed originally.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Donahue, do you have another comment?
Yes, please, a question. When the legal ad was read, it said that there were a number of lots that compiled the square footage on the plan. Is that correct?
Yes, there are four separate lots.
And when, could we please ask the applicant if he bought all those lots at the same time, and which lot was the original building, the original ice cream shop or building lot? time, and which lot was the original building, the original ice cream shop or building lot?
Mr. Hearn?
Yeah, if I may, this is actually one lot on the plan of the registry of deeds, and has been since, I think Gulf Oil bought it back in the 1960s. For some reason, it has, it is for tax parcels. I don't know why. So we, when we file applications, we cite or list all the tax parcels, which helps the department when they're figuring out the 300-foot notice area and all that. And that was a problem back in, in, with the February hearing that we had provided that, but only one was picked up when they were doing the measurements.
Same deed, right?
So it is one, it's one lot.
One, same deed?
Yeah.
Same deed.
Same deed, has been the same all along, no change. If that answers the question, I want to go back to something that you had a moment ago about this. That layout that we're showing and asking for modification on was reviewed at a meeting last week at Town Hall where we had the buildings, the building commissioner, Mr. Pelletier, the deputy fire chief, Mr. Cody, and Captain Campilio. They were the safety officers, and they weigh in on these different proposals that involve traffic flow and parking and so forth. All of them were satisfied that this complied. Mr. Pelletier is a zoning enforcement officer and the building code enforcer, and, and so he's the person in town most familiar with those issues, and he was satisfied with that layout. So that was part of our meeting last week to clear up some of these issues. So I would rely and urge you to rely on the fact that he is satisfied with that, as are the fire--
Has that memorialized a letter to your applicant from the--
No, but I mean, we had the assistant planner with us at that meeting, and we had that discussion.
Al, what was coming to that?
Yeah, we, we had a, a site plan review meeting with the staff that Attorney Hearn mentioned to, to review circulation and other, right, public safety compliance issues, both for this and for the next two cases relating to this property. And so it is true that the, the fire safety officials and the building commissioner were satisfied with the layout.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The, the next hearing for the 2023 decision references some later-dated plans. What do those later-dated plans show with respect to the layout of the parking?
So they show the originally-approved parking.
I see, okay, thank you.
One more question, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Shannon, you verbalized an easy way for me to understand this. How many deeds has the applicant signed in regard to the entire parcel, in regard to his stolen ownership of the property?
Well, you know the applicant wouldn't sign a deed. The applicant would receive a deed, and--
Right, right.
There's one deed to the property.
Is that, is that the case?
Mr. Hearn?
I'll say it again, Mr. Chairman. The plan, when Gulf Oil bought this, it was one lot that they bought.
But it's, it's all under one deed.
Correct, it's one deed.
Yes.
Yeah, and I answered that, too.
Yeah.
Ms. Barrows on--
Yes, Ms. Barrows.
--on the meeting is raising her hand.
Hi, I just wanted to confirm, what is this lot zoned as residential or business?
Residential.
And so it's as a business, as a special permit, correct?
No, it's, well, it's non-conforming to the zoning--
You.
--and it is on special permits, yes.
But, so then, when it follows, when you mentioned earlier that it has to follow the bylaws, does it follow the residential bylaws?
No, it follows 5.4, a non-conforming structure. If you have the zoning, that's what it follows under 5.4.
Okay, so a non-conforming structure for both business and for residential are the same?
Well, there's other sections to 5.4, but that's the general bylaw that covers non-conforming structures.
For both business and residential?
5.0 non-conforming uses and structures, and it requires all non-conforming structures, both residential or commercial.
Thank you.
Yep. So then, so it'd be 5.0 for the business and 5.4 for the, well, 5.4 for this one, because it's, so this would be 5.0. 5.0, yeah. Okay, all righty. Any other questions for members of the board?
Oh, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. O'Neill, seconded by Shannon. Am I closing the public hearing, Al?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes, the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? There's a motion to approve the modification as presented before us. There's a motion to deny the modification that's presented before us. There's a motion to continue.
I mean, it sounds like the rationale for the change in the parking configuration was provided by the applicant. That decision seems that it had been made in coordination with the representative of the town for the purpose of increasing the accessibility of the spaces into the structure. It sounds like this new configuration was recently reviewed by and approved by town staff, including the building commissioner, as well as fire safety for traffic circulation. Based on all of that information, I'm comfortable with moving forward and approving the modification to the special permit as presented in the layout that we have this evening.
Very well put. And the plan that we'll reference for this will be April 2nd, 2025, C102 for the modification of the parking. So a motion's been made to accept the modification as presented. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman--
Oh, yes.
--there was discussion about having a condition of signage?
Oh, yes, yep. So I would recommend, as the engineer had said, that it only should be one-way, so that when persons back out, when persons back out of those handicap, even, of all the hall spots, not only the handicap spots, that they back out and then go towards Canton that way, rather than back the other way. Was that what you had suggested when we spoke about this? Yep.
Do you have to reopen the hearing? We're having a discussion on something.
Well, I guess we don't have to reopen. We can just make it a, a condition that, oh--
Yeah.
We can make just the condition that, that there be a sign that says "All Vehicles," or, or just at least a, a arrow on the ground that indicates that this is the way you're supposed to go.
We'd like to discuss that.
What are the wishes of the board? I mean, the, the engineer kind of, the engineer testified that it would be better for everyone that was in that spot, were looking at the back of the building, or the back of the lot, that when you back out, either the handicap or the other spot, they back out this way instead of backing out this way, because there's some clearance. There's some clearance there. And that way, then they can drive out that way.
Pointe de bord?
Hearing's closed, Ms. Donahue, so there's--
Even in regard to pointe de bord?
Even in regards to pointe de bord, yes.
Thank you.
I'll see if the board wants to just make that decision, or open up the public hearing and discuss it, or just approve this as it, as it's before us.
We're still open to discuss--
The board, we can discuss.
Yeah, I guess I--
You can discuss it, yeah.
I'd be curious to hear in the staff meeting about circulation, was there a concern at all about the clearance between the parking space backing into a car that's parked to receive the gas, and did this come up with recommendations at all? Was that a concern that was flagged?
It didn't come up that, that, you know, it's entirely possible that just none of the staff thought of it, not having the lived experience that Mr. Riki does. But it, it wasn't a concern that, that arose in that meeting.
I mean, we can certainly condition that they, there be a circulation that, that be, they drive in that, any, well, one of the problems you have with vehicles is you have gas tanks on both sides. That's kind of can make it difficult, but it, it did make sense, as the engineer put it, that it would be easier to back out to the right rather than the left, where it's a lot more trouble.
I mean, I think it, I heard one-way circulation, and I think the inference was in that direction. I don't know if the board would like the express clarification to open the hearing, but it was clear to me that one-way circulation with signage, you know, was something indicated by the civil engineer.
Particularly because if we are now one-way in the direction of East Cross Street, you have your garage bays, I believe, on one side of the parcel, and then you have your parking on the other side of the parcel, and then are replacing any vehicle that's coming out of the bay and going back to the parking spaces onto, like, taking a left onto Napont, so to then turn back up to the lot, I guess is maybe a conflict that we could be creating by pushing everybody in that direction.
What we could do is continue it and then ask the fire, present this question to the fire department while we've already, well, we can still continue it and ask for a recommendation from the fire department on if they think it's necessary to have signage that says "One Way." Yes, we can do it, Dave.
Without reopening?
Yes, we can. No, no, we can take a recommendation from--
You can take, Mr. Chairman, all due respect. You can have taken evidence.
Dave, we can, we can. We can take a recommendation from the fire department, voting on this, okay? Either that, or we can just deny it.
I understand. I don't, I don't want you to do that, but I'm just trying to make--
You can. I'll, I'll send you the case law. So what are the wishes of the board? Do we want to just, if we feel that that's the safe thing to do, we can condition it that the signage indicate a circulation that they flows one-way, which would be towards East Cross Street. So that would be, that would be, if we were going to do that, that's what it would say.
How long's it been like this? How long's, how long have the new space been there?
Been there a couple of years.
Two years.
Have we had any accidents?
I'm not sure.
If we haven't had any accidents, I don't know why we're making an issue when there isn't one.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yep. Al, you have any thoughts on it?
I happened to figure, Matt, on that. We don't want to get into a big situation of wayfinding and all that, just for circulation issues.
Okay. The engineer brought it up, that's why we're addressing it. Okay, Shannon, you succinctly put forth a good argument for a motion to approve the modification. So that was the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Now, is there any further discussion regarding it? Okay, a motion's been made and seconded regarding the modification, approving the modification per, the plan is presented to us on April 2nd, 2025, as indicated from PVI Site Design. We're going to hold you to that plan. On the motion, Matt?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
That modification's approved. Okay. Now, we're going to have to bring up the public hearing again, Al, if you're sorry.
Yes.
I'm not sure if--
Okay, here we go.
Yep.
So this public hearing is for May 6th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at 275 Prospect Street in Norwood at the request of Norwood Gulf Incorporated, case number 25-10, for a property located at 707 Napont Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, 02062, MAP 18, Block 1, lots 34, 35, 41, and 42 in the single-residence zoning district. The applicant requests modification to a special permit decision issued in case number 23-26 to change the location of the building addition. Any zoning relief that may be required and adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. There's a video call link for Google Meet and, as well as a phone number. Plans are on file with the application in the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by email and comdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hearn. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Hearn Jr., Gellman and Cabral, 30 Wallpole Street, on behalf of Norwood Gulf. And this second case relates to a request for modification with respect to the original decision in case number 23-26. That was the decision the board made later in 2023 that authorized the construction of an addition to the building. And what my client built was an addition that includes a service write-up desk and a waiting area for customers and some other facilities. The decision was dated September 19th, 2023, and it was, again, a, an addition to the existing gas station. What has come up and what needs correction is an issue related to the references to the plan and the plan that was submitted. When we submitted that plan, there were several sheets submitted, and the cover sheet, by error, was a cover sheet that showed the, a smaller-shaped area, and, and Mr. Power can explain this better, because he's the guy who draws the plans, but when we filed them, we, and it probably was done by me because it's done online, mistakenly had one sheet that referred to the wrong shape of the addition, the wrong area of the addition. And the area was originally 763 square feet. It's the same issue that came up with the planning board when they made reference in their decision to an addition as shown on the plan. It was that same cover sheet, and it crept into the next filing. The other sheets that were filed with case number 23-26 were all accurate as to the layout of the addition, the size of the addition, which was 998 square feet. They were all accurate, and that's what we described, and that's what was built. But the question, and what we've been cited by the building inspector on, is that the, the plans are not consistent with Plan Reference C102 layout of materials as to the, the size of the addition. He says that the, the cover sheet, or the sheet that shows the addition on the site, is 763 square feet. What was built was 998. So we're trying to correct that by asking you to accept, in place of that sheet, the revised sheet, which we have submitted. And, Tim, the date on that was, we have that, I'd actually be able to put that up? Yeah. And there's also a request for a waiver on building plans on this procedural matter, Mr. Chairman.
That's not it. Here we go.
I think we're in large mode here. We'll be getting this here.
Let me just jump over so I can share it with folks online.
So I think there's a plan here in red, with red outline. That was the addition that was shown in outline on the original plans we filed with the planning board in early 2023. We were not at that time seeking their approval for a building addition because we had to go to the zoning board for permission for that, extension of a non-conforming structure, non-conforming use. It's extension of a non-conforming use. So this shows in black what was actually built as an addition, not the outlined in red. So the plan that we have filed, and the date on that is, Tim, where's the date on that final one? I want to make sure I'm giving you the right date. I have April 2nd, and the plan says layout of materials, plan overlay. So this is what we're asking. You substitute that plan. This plan is consistent with the, all the drawings we showed you, showing the layout of the building and renderings of the building and so forth. So this is, and that, that was why we requested a waiver of the filing of building plans as part of this. So we're just asking to substitute a plan, the correct plan for the plan that erroneously was attached with the other plans that were filed back then. And then in connection with that, we asked for a waiver of the requirement of filing building plans due to the fact that the plans-- due to the fact that the plans showing the building addition were previously filed with case 23-26, and the modification involves no change to the building plans from what was originally filed. It's just that cover sheet had the wrong outline of the building. That's it, Tim, that's what I was... That was the issue, yeah. And the building inspector raised this issue. And so, again, I had written to him after he wrote, sent his letter of dated March 7th, I wrote to him and laid out how we were going to respond. And that's why we're here. You know, I told him we would file with this board for a modification to get the correct plan in there. And we believe that the plan, the building was built in terms of layout, consistent with the, in a way that is consistent with that layout that you see there, outlined in black with gray shading. So that's what that one's about, Mr. Chairman.
If that's already built?
Yeah.
Why do you need a waiver on the building plans?
So that the plans, the plan that was, is the basis of your decision is corrected, so that somebody looking at the file on this decision, 23-26, will see that the building that was authorized matches all of the plans. And the building that was built matches all of the plans. Right now, we've got one sheet, the former sheet, C102, that shows the wrong outline of the building. And that goes back to when it was just a thought of doing it, and it crept in.
When we did this, you asked for a waiver on the building plans then?
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, when we did this back a few years ago, you asked for a waiver on the building plans then, right?
No, I think we gave you the building plans.
Yeah, so the original case of 23-26, there was a set of building plans that were submitted and approved, and those building plans showed the addition as it was built, whereas the site plan that was provided showed the red box that is shown. So the site plan didn't match the building plans in that.
Are you able, can we, like, pull those up so we can compare?
Yep.
Excuse me, Rob, that's being pulled up? I'm sorry, I can't see it. I'm on the phone. My name is Jeanne Palmetier, and I live at 18 Ridge Road.
Please mute.
And my only name...
Jeanne, please mute, Jeanne. Jeanne, the
Yep.
Hearing, we're waiting to hear from the applicant. The board is asking questions. We will open the hearing up very shortly.
Okay.
Thank you. Dave, while we're on this...
Alex, can you go to full screen to show that?
I'm not totally confident that I can. Let's see. Nope, that's worse.
So those are the building plans there?
Um, correct.
And that's how it was built?
Correct.
So it's the site plan that needs a correction?
Right, just that one sheet substituting. We see this once in a while. I had one a few years ago and another one where they made a change. After they went to the zoning board, they went to the planning board, planning board had them configure lots a little bit differently. We found out a couple of years later, and we went back and had asked to substitute the plan. Same idea here.
Same engineer?
Same engineer. I'm not sure. I don't think it was the, I don't think it was the engineer's fault. I think it might have been the guy who filed it.
Just a question while we're looking that up and Rachel takes a look at that. It was presented at the last hearing that the facade would be the same as the existing building, and that's not the case today.
You mean?
This was, this was one of your presentations at that hearing. And it looked pretty nice, and I really liked it. But we went with
I don't...
Some type of siding.
Yeah, I understand. That's been raised. That has been a question we've heard recently. I think it, I don't remember that we discussed the specifics, but it may be that there was a reference on the plan to brick or something like that. And I see what you mean in the pictures. I try to say that it's gonna look something like this, but it looks a little bit different with the gray. We think it's not unattractive at all, but I'll let Mr. Jory say that. He built it.
Rachel had the floor just while we were waiting, so go ahead.
Yeah, I just was interested to see, because it sounds like just there was an error in the submission, and the first page was not correct, and everything else was correct, and it was built to all but one page. I'd just like to see what was before the boards, so that I just, what was the body looking at at the time?
But to your, to your point, Ms. Churchill, if the one page that was in, like, did we ever see a site plan then with the proper layout? Because that is generally a large piece of information that we're making a decision on. And if we never saw a layout in the site plan format, then that is like a misinformation that we had when we were making that decision, even if the building renderings were correct.
The building renderings were correct, the floor plans were correct.
But how it was laid out on the site never was.
Can we go back to the one that shows the floor plans? Alex, please. So this is the addition which matches what we if we go back to that one we're trying, that we want to substitute, it's the same shape. It's the same thing.
But we never saw a site plan with the proper shape on it, I guess is my question.
No, you didn't. I mean, everything is the same. In other words, this, this layout, all this was the same. You had already approved this over here. And we were working off those plans.
Right, but the building.
The mistake was, we used the site, the covered page, the first page, the old one, got mixed up.
Right.
And so we want to correct that.
Well, for me, that's more than just an administrative error we never saw.
So we never received a site plan, and we approved it without a site plan?
Or we saw the wrong site.
You saw the wrong site plan.
We saw the wrong site plan. So it's not just the first page. It's the site plan we had was the wrong one.
Right, because that was the first page.
What was before you wasn't so much the whole site, because you'd already approved the expansion of the parking lot?
Sure, right.
What was before you was expanding the building. So the, those floor plans follow those lines
Sure.
that are depicted on this corrective plan.
Correct, but not seeing the footprint of the building in the context of the larger site is what would be a challenge for me to make a decision as a board member, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right.
Seeing it as just a building in isolation is a very different piece of information than seeing it as a building in the context of the parcel.
Right. I don't disagree on that, and I think that's why we want to correct this, so that anybody looking at this in the future too will know that this is what was built. It was, it was presented as a building with the square footage that we have 998. The only error was that outline on the lot. Much of it, you can see looking at the outline of the floor, but I appreciate, the floor plans, but you can appreciate that this shows how it fits in on the lot. And the differences are goes back a little bit more here, still well back, the line of the property is way back here. Fits in here, goes out a little bit here. There's an angle here that is changed, and that's part of it. So much of it is within that 763-square-foot area that was outlined. Most of it. Most of the addition fits within the red. 100 feet are outside of it.
So that's not accurate?
This is, the red is what we submitted in 2023. The black is what was actually built.
What's there now?
Yeah. Yeah, so this white area was within the 763-square-feet.
Hello?
These gray areas...
Public hearing has not been opened to the public, ma'am, and will be shortly.
These gray areas here, outlined in black, that's the part that expanded beyond what was shown on that little plan. So that's how it goes from 763 feet to, the net change is 763 to 998. Right, I agree. Agree on that.
It does, but can we see the first page? Was, is what you had the first page, or was it an interior page? Because it seemed to show the footprint of what was actually built.
So we have three different plans that were submitted with that case, the construction plans, the elevation plans, and the layout plans. So this is the layout plan. So it was a standalone sheet.
That's what's incorrect.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
I see that that definitely looks different. And that's the incorrect one that was submitted to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the wrong one, not the right one. This was 763 square feet.
And it had, does it say the square footage there?
Says here, proposed 763-square-feet addition. The the later one shows the when we go to the ones that show the full layout, does that show the square footage? Tim, do you remember?
Uh, the floor plans.
We go to the floor plan one. Alex, please.
I don't think, yeah.
Yeah, I think I am understanding. I can, I can see what the board was looking at at the time.
This is yellow. It doesn't show.
Yeah.
I don't think it shows the actual square footage unless, unless it's somewhere buried in the plan.
Just trying to go back in my memory, I can see how I might have thought that in the upper-left quadrant, that larger box could be mistaken for just the addition, as opposed to it also including that little smaller kickout on the end. Yeah, I could see being confused, trying to overlay that on two different sheets. Thank you. I think I'm, I think I see.
Matt, anything?
Are there any impacts that are different from what was the mistaken one versus what was actually built?
It doesn't impact the parking, doesn't impact the traffic flow. In fact, this door here is where the parking, those spaces we discussed earlier, we're going in here. They, they're not going this way, as approved. That's the door into the, that was a new thing that was added for easier access to the waiting area and the service write-up area on that addition. The prior one didn't shut out on this side of the building. But it does not affect the parking lot that had been approved or the circulation in the front of the building. There is still, you know, the back of the building is the same. It goes back a ways before you get to the end of the property. So, no, it's just, it's bigger by 235 square feet.
But no accessory impacts whatsoever?
I don't believe so.
One be the other, okay.
Doesn't affect the drainage, it doesn't affect circulation, doesn't affect parking spaces.
I'm good.
Shannon?
No, no further questions?
Al, anything?
I'm kind of concerned. What was built was 30% larger than was proposed to us. And I think that's gotta be intentional. If you're building it, you know the cost of 763 square feet and 998 square feet, two different numbers price-wise. This should have been brought up a long time ago. This never should have happened. I don't see where, really, it's our responsibility for this.
I can respond to that, Mr. Chairman. The plans filed with the building commissioner, the building department, and the building permit were all accurate as to 998 square feet. They, that's what was filed, that's what was approved. This only came to light when somebody was looking at the file and said, "This says 763, that says 998." But the building department filings were all accurate, the building permit fees were all accurate. It's, the oversight was that the wrong sheet was attached to the plan set that we sent in for this, for this filing. And it wasn't discovered until the question was raised beginning of March, when we were coming here on that, on the third case. And the building inspector, we had discussion with him, we had correspondence, and he said, "Look, I'm gonna cite you, and you've got three months to clear it up." And we're doing that. The earliest date we could get, all this, and so he has not objected to the building. His objection is, you've got the wrong plan to memorialize what was done. Your floor plans are fine, your renderings are fine.
But the plan we voted on is wrong.
Well, the site plan.
Not the architectural plans.
Not the architectural plans, not the layout plans. Those are all correct. You had those in front of you, and you voted on those. The only difference is, how big was that? How big was it in terms of how many square feet were we proposing to build? And if we'd come into you and said, "It was 998, and here's the layout," the layout would have looked exactly the same. It's just the outline of it on the site plan that was erroneous. Not the building itself, not the architectural, not the building permit fees, none of that. The objection of the building commissioner is not to the, to the building itself or to its occupancy or to the fees or anything. The objection is, he says, "Your plan doesn't match the rest of the building." "Your plan doesn't match your construction drawings, your architectural drawings." How did that happen? The answer is, the wrong plan was attached, it was a holdover from a prior filing. That's all it is. So the solution is, as has happened before, when there have been changes to plans, some intentional, some unintentional, you come back in and say, "We want to correct the record." "We want the plan to reflect what we actually built, what we intended to build, what we showed you we were building, in all respects, except for the cover sheet." That's, that's the difference. So that's what we're asking you to authorize.
Any else, Al?
I'm good.
How do you correct the facade?
Well, you raised that issue now, on the brick. So I don't believe it was called out as a specific condition of the plan, and in good faith, my client...
That's what was presented to us.
I think it was on the plans. I don't know that we discussed the brick, but I think the question is, you know, I have to ask my client about it, but...
If you go on those plans, doesn't it call, on the plans you submitted here, it calls for a brick facade?
And there was... New brick to match existing.
Yeah, new brick to match existing. So how do you correct that?
Probably have to put up some sort of a some sort of a brick coating. One of those things people sometimes put on fronts of houses. Is that right, Tim?
Like, it might be up in here or something.
Yeah, that's up in here. If the board feels that ought to be done, then you can make it a condition.
I remember it being on the plan, because I remember commenting specifically. I commented, "That really looks good," and... Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Hearn? I'll open it up to the public.
I think that was it.
We'll do the same thing, if you don't mind. We'll hear from everybody, take your notes.
Yeah.
And then address it. I know you like to jump up, but it just makes it go...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because I'm procedural, ma'am, but yes.
It just makes it go... It just makes it go a little better than having you up and down, and it gets confusing, as you know. Okay, anyone like to approach the podium and discuss this matter? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Ms. Homewood, from the planning board.
Debbie Homewood, Beach, 49 Beach Street, Norwood. Question to Mr. Hearn, to you, Mr. Chair. Clarify, what you voted on was 763 square feet?
Well, voted on approving the plans as presented, and the construction plans were correct. The site plan was wrong.
Which one said 763 square feet?
The site plan that they presented, which would have been the cover sheet. And then we looked at the construction plan, which was the larger. I believe it was just an oversight. I think there was an architect and an engineer on this. So I think the surveyor architect, surveyor, our engineer supplied the site plan, and then the architect supplied the construction plans. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Hearn?
Then I filed them, so you might, you can throw me under the bus.
Yeah.
I wouldn't throw Tim Power under the bus.
Yeah.
But if we compile them, that's what probably happened.
So just so you can educate me.
Yeah.
If we had done it the other way, zoning, then planning, would this have alleviated...
Well, it would have to come before zoning before, because it's non-conforming, and then you have site plan review. So it's gotta be zoning first, because if we don't approve it, then there's no site plan review.
Okay, that I get.
Yeah.
I just... Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
On that point, was this part of the discussion of planning board last week?
Yes, Deb, you went over this last, no, they just did.
Not this one.
So the, at the planning board meeting last week where they discussed modifying their site plan approval, they voted on removing reference to this building addition from the site plan approval, because the building addition itself didn't trigger site plan... site plan approval, because the building addition itself didn't trigger site plan approval. The site plan approval was triggered by the parking lot only. So they, they essentially just said, "We are not going to, to comment on the, this addition."
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anyone on Google Meet that would like to talk about the modification? Yes, oh, yes, sir, you can sit down if you'd like.
Yeah, that's all right. I'm capable of being loud.
Okay, thank you, sir. Name and address for the record.
My name is Donald Hale at 583 Neponson Street. Uh, my comments on this are going to probably be lost in the minutiae of the discussion about legal this and what happens and all the rest of it. However, uh, I wish to call to anybody who will listen's attention that the character of Norwood is in discussion here. Not just here, but as things go along after this too. Uh, if you have not seen the pictures, I presume you've all seen it, uh, it's instructional to take a look at what has happened, uh, in a residential neighborhood. And I'm wondering if the town of Norwood would like to redefine what's a residential Norwood in general, because it was not put in to have, "Oh, let's do a little here, a little there, let's pave this over, let's make this into a non-conforming commercial site." It was put in, in fact, to protect us. Everybody sitting here, us, as opposed to somebody who wants to run a business. I ran a business. I had issues, but it is up to the, the boards in the town of Norwood to decide just how far to go in accommodating somebody who has an idea of how to make some more money. We all like to do that, but there are consequences for every single action, short-term and long-term. I'm not concerned about the traffic flow as far as the handicap things. I am concerned about the Campbell's nose under the tent, which is an often-used tactic by developers or whoever else. Build something a little, oh, well, it's all built, we'll just take care of the details. Uh, that can end up with a huge factory on what used to be a farm, if it's allowed to go forward. The principal thing I'm trying to say here is, pay attention to what has been done and what was promised to be done. Be aware of the differences and think about how you can correct them. At a minimum, in this particular discussion, he needs to take the building face off and do it right. And that means, whatever it costs him, is the cost of doing business.
It's a tax.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
To add, Ann Mackey with Cross Street, to add on to what he's saying, I live next to a situation like this, where there is a mechanic's business right in the middle, behind a house and next to mine. The noise issues are horrific. When they first went in there, it was a mom and pop, just like Cumberland Farms must have been. And then the landlord who owns the property has the last two tenants come in there, and they think they can run a mega Providence Highway Route 1 business on Cross Street, which is a little residential street. And there's been nothing but abuse between noise, their hours have increased, there's no peace and quiet in the neighborhood on Saturday and Sunday. And it's the same thing. First, they paved over, and they didn't ask for permission, and they even paved over a portion of the neighbor's property. And things are getting done there that aren't either by the bylaws, or they're doing it and they're asking for forgiveness afterwards, instead of seeking the proper permits and stuff.
Well, we'll do that, we'll make a note of that, and we'll send the building inspector I know right where it is, because my mother-in-law lives on Cross Street.
He hasn't been able to start it.
Well, we'll, I'll inquire about that.
Just for a point of clarification, that's a different property and a different property owner.
Yes, yeah, it's not before us. But we'll certainly address with the building inspector. Uh, yes, sir, name and address for the record.
Hello, Ms. Chair. Victor Saba, 232 East Cross. I'm hearing a lot of different things from people behind me and whatnot. Just to clarify, the issue that you guys are bringing up, it's about the difference of plan that was, uh, that we're seeing now versus the plan that was, um, originally given, right? And that's a difference of about 200 or so square feet. Um, I just kind of want to dial it back in on what's actually being approved here today. Does that make any sort of difference, as far as you know? Or maybe Mr. Hearn can speak about this, or I don't know who can, but any actual legitimate difference to, um, the residence, traffic, any, does it cause any sort of issue? Or is it just a clerical error, and that's that? And even if it was submitted correctly in the past, might have been approved either way? You know, is there actually any substance of, well, to harming the neighborhood, this, that, and the other, parking lighting, trees, everything else for this specific matter?
Um, we vote, we approved this on the construction plans, which show, has, has been built to the plan, and that included the lighting and that stuff. So I think Matt had asked a question on the last one.
Yeah.
There's no accessory spillover on this case. The next one might be different. And Mr. Hearn's shaking his head here, so he got it right.
Okay. So, as far as what, I guess, was shown versus what is being presented now, is it your opinion or the engineer's opinion that it actually affects anything?
Well, we'll have that discussion amongst the board members.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah. From, from what I'm seeing, and as a resident there, looking at the plans, I do personally feel that it's slight, I guess, mix-up in the numbers. And while other things are being brought up that may have an actual effect, I don't see this having any sort of effect, just to clarify my opinion.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. Helen Donahue, District 6. Perhaps the Board of Appeal would continue this matter until after the last request has been addressed. And then, then you could have, as the last one you voted on should, I, my opinion, should have been continued till the end of this thing. All, the order of, of procedure has been established, and we're going backwards. We're not following, you should follow the order. One thing done first, and then the next. That's one point. The question that the young man just asked about, uh, under what's being affected, the use, the use and the extent are being affected. That's what we're talking about. Under the Massachusetts General laws, there are four, there used to be, when I was a attorney, uh, zoning attorney, there used to be four criteria for the granting of special warrants, or, and three variances. One of them was impact on the neighborhood. That was one of the big criteria that we always used to have to prove. And who, everybody, mostly everybody here is the neighborhood. So please consider continuing this question until after the final decision is made.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Yes. Cheryl, please come up to me. Yeah, you can sit, just state your name and address for the record.
Cheryl Doyle, 12 Sumner Street. I'm wondering, what did you guys actually vote on for square footage? Not, I, I know there was a lot of papers, and they're saying there's a, a mix-up, but from what Al's saying, it's almost like you guys voted on the smaller one and not the larger one.
It's the other way around. We voted on the construction plans, which included the brick facade. So that's what we voted on. And then the site plan that was presented was different than the construction plan. So we're, we're just correcting a, an error on the site plan. But we did vote, we did vote on the actual construction plans, which was the larger number.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone on Google Meet that would like to comment on this matter?
Yes. Karen Barrows, 576 Neponson Street. Quickly becoming your most favorite person in the world, I'm sure. Um, so I had a question about the structure on the, looking at the, the structure on the site plan, it looks like the one that they actually constructed bumps back slightly. So in terms of impact, what I'm wondering is, are there lights on the back of the building that now are closer to the, the rear of the lot that would impact neighbors and what neighbors are able to see? Because it does look like it bumps back, um, I, I can't tell how many feet from the picture on the thing. So that would be my first question.
Okay, go ahead.
My second, sorry.
Yeah, continue on. Mr. Hearn took a note on that, we'll have him. That's all you were shooting.
My second question is, is it Mr. Pelletier or Mr. Hearn? Who's, who am I, who's the lawyer?
Mr. David Hearn.
Mr. David Hearn. Mr. Hearn kept saying that he filed all the right papers, and that they paid the right building permit fees and stuff. And my question was, do you get approval from the zoning board before you file or after you file all those documents? Because if you get it before you file the documents, then having paid the fee doesn't really matter, right? That's not an important or relevant piece of information, because you can mislead the zoning board and then pay all the correct fees. And then my last question is, can, can I just get clarification on why they need a waiver on the building plans? Is it because they're already submitted, or is it, I, I don't understand that part.
There's, they're asking for no waivers on this, and I'll answer your second question. They did present the construction plans that included the larger number to the Board of Appeals, and that's what we voted on. Uh, I think at that time, we were more concerned with the parking lot, and my concern was the sidewalk being blocked. Uh, so we, we looked at the site plan regarding that parking lot to the right, and then we got into the construction plans, and it was just a, an oversight, uh, of, 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 of the board and, and I think the petitioner.
Okay, he is asking for a waiver, though, on building plans. I noted that when he was speaking. Can I, can I just get an understanding of that?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me have, okay, any other questions, the Barrows? Ms. Barrows, I'm sorry?
No, thank you, that's it.
Okay, Dave, just take that note. Dave, just take that note, and just want to see if anyone else is in Google Meet? Is anyone else in Google Meet? Okay, David, you addressed the lights and the waiver. I think I addressed the plans.
Right, on the waiver, um, one of the requirements when you're filing is to submit building plans. But there are various reasons why an applicant may not be able to or may not want to file building plans, and so the instruction is to include in place of that a request for a waiver, which we did. And the reason for the waiver is that the building is already built, and the plans were already filed with the zoning board. So we weren't, we're not building something. We're just trying to correct a site plan. So i- in terms of the order of things, I think it's, I think you said it's correct. We, we go to the zoning board for permission to build a particular addition to the building. Then if that's granted, we go to the building department with the building plans. We showed you the, the building plan, floor plans and all that as part of the process. And the, uh, some people may not realize this, but, uh, building permit fees are based on the, what you're actually building, uh, the square footage. So all of that was done in good faith. Nothing here was done intentionally to hide from you what we were doing. It was simply a mistake, and I'll take the hit for that, that if, when we were putting the plans together and submitting them electronically, uh, I can tell you that they all look alike when they're listed in my list of documents, that I'm then trying to grab and add to the filing electronically. So that's all it was. And it was not even discovered until somebody, I think, called it attention to the building commissioner. And then he called it, you know, he came up with us, and we said, "Okay, we'll deal with it."
Okay, there was a question on the lights, because it was bumped out a little bit from the original site plan. Uh, the question was, did the, any effect on the neighbors in the back because of the lighting?
The lights are shielded to go down. Those lights are really security lights. They're not designed to light up the yard, they're security lights. And so they're there to, um, make the property more secure, which helps to make the neighbor more secure. So they're angled.
Ms. Barrows, did I answer your questions?
Yes, it does, thank you very much.
Yep. Anyone else? Okay. Any questions from the board? Will we consider closing the public hearing?
I'm just on the lights, they're, they're affixed to the structure, and how high up are they?
On the, excuse, on the back of the building, they are about 12 feet up, on that back wall. There are.
Two lights on there?
Two lights on the back that shine down on the property.
And as part of that plan that was approved, was there a luminosity requirement on those lights?
No, not at that, on that thing. We did that in connection with the parking lot. Yeah, we did it in connection with the parking lot.
On that side, but not on the other side.
Right, we didn't, we didn't do a photoelectric type thing. Photometric, I'm sorry.
We put a candlelight limit on that, didn't we? On, on those.
A foot candle?
Yeah.
Limit?
Didn't we put something like that on the parking lot, not the building?
Yeah, in the 2022-25 case, a photometric plan was provided and included as part of the approved plans, which obviously doesn't include the lights on this, this addition, which came later.
The photometrics, people were more concerned, I think, with this parking lot being expanded. That was done, that was reviewed with the planning board also.
I remember that. Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Will we? Okay, will entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Chairman, can I make a comment going back? And I'm just looking at the notes of what the questions were here. I took, tried to take good notes, as you suggested. I, I know, and I think you picked up that what Ms. Mackey was talking about has nothing to do with our property. It's an entirely different operation, an entirely different neighborhood. And it would, with respect to a suggestion of continuing this, I mean, if there is, as you pointed out, um, and really, it's only been pointed out, and I'm not aware of it, but until it got pointed out in some of the recent correspondence about the brick versus non-brick, it was done in part to kind of separate that building in, the view of that building, because that's where the customers go in. We can do it, and if you want to put a condition on that tells us to put something like brick there, so it might be a brick veneer rather than actual full bricks, uh, if you put that as a condition, that's enforceable by the building inspector. And he's well aware of this property and will be following up with us on all these conditions. So if you add something like that, you feel you want it done, that would be a way to do it. I don't see any point in continuing it, because I don't know how long it takes to get that done, and rather get the matter resolved.
I guess, one information point.
Yeah.
In the event the board were not to approve the request, what, what would happen at that point? Can you walk us through that?
I guess the question would be whether anybody considers it as something that ought to be enforced by the building commissioner.
So it would be an enforcement action by the commissioner?
I suppose. He's not, I, I understand, he's, he's more concerned with building code, and it might have been called to his attention, and I don't know whether he felt strongly, but he hasn't cited it to us. He, you know, he's reviewed these plans, and he sent us the letter of March 7th. I responded March 18th with what we're going to do in response to what he cited. So it hadn't been called to our attention, really. And I'm sorry that it happened, but again, this was not, it was like, let's put an area, because this area is used by customers as a waiting area and also a service write-up desk. What it does is it keeps people from hanging around the front of the building and wandering the parking lot while their car is being serviced or inspected, or something like that, which can create hazards of a different type. So my client made a, a comfortable waiting area and a service write-up area that works a lot better than the old system. And that's what is intended there. So we think it adds to the, to the, to the benefit of the customers and their experience and to safety issues.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, okay. I don't think there's any appetite here from the board to continue this. I don't see any appetite, so. Uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Made by Matt, second by Shannon. Matt, on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes, the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? The only comment I have is, I think we should enforce the brick facade. To Mr. Hearn's point, it does not have to be brick, but there's fine brick facade there, and, and that would be my only, um, condition that I would seek of, I don't know how everyone else feels about it. But that's all I have. Any, Matt, comments on the?
No, I think it was a, an honest mistake, it was an oversight. I think that the impacts are, they're not even de minimis. There aren't any additional impacts, so I would move to, to approve and, with your condition.
Okay. Shannon, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I think it's, it was just an oversight. We did have the accurates for footage in the construction plans, so it's not that we didn't have that information. It's unfortunate, because I know I personally use the site plan a lot for understanding how the different structures and uses on a site all align with everything else on the site and sort of the abutting uses. But at least, you know, where it is jutting back a bit more, there is more parcel space behind it as well, sort of buffering between the end of the building and the neighborhood. So I think it's worthwhile having this one error corrected in the file to have that correct moving forward.
Okay. Rachel, anything?
Yeah, kind of the same. It can be confusing. It's hard to say what I was thinking about, but I can see being confused overlaying just the standalone footprint over the incorrect site plan that we had. Not something, like, I think it would be, like, just prone to waste to try to require enforcement now, but it makes me uncomfortable not being able to rely on the property owner's plans. So I'm, you know, inclined to approve it, confirming conformity with the other, like, the brick facade that was approved in the plan before. But it's just hard to ask for forgiveness after the fact, notwithstanding that I do think it was just an oversight error. I don't think there was any intentionality, not that it's relevant to the ultimate determination, but I'm inclined to approve this request.
Okay. Al?
My only question, Mike, is gets the say as to what the proposed facade?
Well, I think when we go back to the plan that was originally submitted, that called out for a brick facade that matches the existing brick, I think that's what the language was. What does it say in that original plan, Alex?
Yeah, so it does say new brick to match existing.
Yeah, so we're going to call it a brick facade, you know, that would be burdenous, quite frankly. So they make panels that look just like brick. So we'll call to it match that the facade match the original building according with the plan, and it'll probably be a facade. They come in panels, and they drop in. It's pretty, and they look just like real brick, because I've done a couple of them. Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah, okay. So a motion's been made by Matt to approve this modification, correct the square footage in the site plan, and the condition, which we want to write into the conditions, that the applicant complies with the original construction drawings that called out for brick, but this could be substituted with a brick facade that matches the existing brick building. Everyone good with that? Is there a second? Matt made the motion?
Second.
Second by Shannon. Al, on the motion with the condition?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And yes, so that is done?
Another point, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's still that open question of the waiver of submitting building plans. You didn't vote on that yet.
Probably should have done that, huh?
Well, I think you can do it any time.
Yeah. Just the applicant has requested to waive the building plans. The building plans have been submitted. They have been approved by the building inspector, and they are on file, so this is simply a housekeeping matter. There's a motion moved by Shannon.
To approve the waiver.
To approve the waiver of the building plans. Seconded by Matt. Matt, on the motion?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel? Al?
Yes.
Yes. The waiver's been granted. Thank you. All right, now we're going to get to the long one. Alec, can you?
Yes. So this one, I think, actually, we've already read, because it's been continued twice.
Okay, so this is the continuation from the March 4th 25 meeting, 707 Nippon Street, case 25-2, request for special permit under section 5.2 of the zoning bylaw. Mr. Hearn?
Good evening, again. David Hearn Jr., Gellman and Cabral, 30 Walpole Street, Norwood, on behalf of the applicant and Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is a request for special permit relief to allow the expansion of a non-conforming use on the site at 707 Nippon Street, the Norwood Gulf property. It is a request to allow the construction of an addition to the building that would add three bays on the East Cross Street side of the building. This area would be accessed only from within the building, not from East Cross Street. It is laid out, and Mr. Power will take us through the plan, but I do want to point out that access to these bays coming off the back of the building but facing at an angle, East Cross Street, would only be within the property. The property would have appropriate screening, and there is fencing. There is access provided on the plan. The plan shows proposed emergency access gate. That is something that is proposed for the sake of the fire department and emergency responders. It was discussed with the fire department at the meeting last week, and they told us what they wanted, and that they wanted that, and gave us instructions that if this is approved, you know, they'll get the appropriate lock and key and all that that the fire department carries and the police department carries with them. So this is a, this will not allow for access by the public. The property, the workers will generally bring cars back to these bays. And again, any access or egress from the proposed building addition will lead back out toward the front of the property on the Nippon Street side. No exit onto East Cross Street from here. Again, the only gate, the gate is only there for fire department or emergency access. Beyond that, it involves a slight shifting, I think, of the pergola that's in the back of the property now, has to be moved a few feet. We also discussed with the fire department and with the, Mr. Ryan, the head of the Department of Public Works, and with Mr. Pelletier, the building commissioner, a question that has come up in the past, and that has to do with an area along the front of the property where cars have lined up to wait for inspections. The concern has been that sometimes those cars are over the line. You can't tell where the line is because it's all new asphalt. Sidewalk there is close to eight feet wide, and you wouldn't know that you're on either town property or this property. So the discussion we had, and this was satisfactory to the fire department and the director of public works, and was satisfactory to the planning board, and we met with them last week, to ensure that cars that are maybe queuing up to go into the inspection bay do not cross over the line. We've at times had them painted. We've kept people more or less in line, but to ensure that they're not crossing over into the public sidewalk, which I said is about eight feet wide, we have proposed, subject to the approval of DPW and fire department, some sort of little of barrier. Not a fence, not ballards, but a curb of some sort. And the planning board's vote was, that's fine, so long as it conforms to the requirements of the fire department and DPW, we're okay with it. And they made that a condition of their review and modification. So that deals with something that I know has come up in the past before this board, and that is the solution, some sort of a curb. So, and the fire department stressed that in that discussion, that they don't like the idea of fences or ballards because there may be a reason in an emergency to actually drive over the boundary line onto the sidewalk. And so if you put a curb there, the big vehicles, ambulances, fire department, anybody could get over it, but somebody waiting is going to be guided to stay within the boundary lines by that curb. So that is something that is, it's a topic we've discussed before. I know, Mr. Chairman, you were concerned in the past about a sign, the way people were lining up, and that's the solution that we're working on and will be working on with the fire department and DPW. Beyond that, I'm going to ask Tim Power to explain exactly what is proposed here, but you, and Alex, if maybe you could call up the plans. We have several sheets. I think you have them in front of you, and I'm happy to give out copies if you need anything more. Tim, the plan we're looking at is, has been revised, I think, but you know it better than anybody.
Just one question. Are they seeking any waivers on this?
In terms of the filing?
Yeah.
I think we gave, let's see, building plans?
Yes, for building plans.
On this one, for building plans also?
Yes.
Oh, I think the question was, let me look at that, I'm sorry.
And the reason I ask, I don't want to have this situation that we just had to correct.
No, I think we'll be more specific. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So they are seeking a waiver?
Right. If I can ask Tim Power to come up on that. Mr. Chairman, you can explain a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim Power, civil engineer, 18 Glendale Road. Plan is on the screen before you. Sorry for the rotation. We had a new survey done as part of this and a part of the ASBILT of the previous effort, and that surveyor turned everything sideways to this orientation, and it actually read a little better with this.
What's the date on that plan? So we're all on the same plan.
I believe there's an April date, April 2nd? Sorry, I can't read it.
What's the date on it? Mine is December 27th. Is that?
I have December 27th. I have December 27th.
Yeah, so.
This is revised February 3rd, 2025.
So we're going to have to explain the revisions as they go along.
Yes, I can. There's one basic revision, so. So the proposal is what's shown in gray there, and bold outline is the proposed building addition.
Which parts of Nippon Street?
Ma'am, I'll give you more than enough opportunity to speak.
So again, referencing the rotation of the plan, Nippon Street is now on page right on this plan, and East Cross Street is on the bottom, page bottom. You can see the name cut off just slightly. So most of the cars are entering from the right side and coming around.
Alec, excuse me, can you turn that just a bit so these folks over here can see it? Just so make sure the engineer can also see it there. Is that good? Can you see that okay?
Thank you.
Can the board still see it?
Over here, East Cross, over here.
Do you have that one?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
So the building being shown in dark gray with the bold, and the only revision we made, the change between the plan, is the interstitial piece between the existing building and the main part of the proposed building was shown at one point as an open canopy. If I can, I'll go to the screen and show that. So from here around, it was proposed an open canopy, and that is now intended to be a closed, fully enclosed building.
Fully closed, okay.
Can I, just on that very specific point, I'm looking at two different plans. One of them has that proposed open canopy area. That one has the proposed addition at 2,145 square feet, and the one that doesn't have the canopy is 2,520 square feet. Does that, the closed versus the open canopy account for that distinction?
Correct. That's the difference in square footage there. When it became fully enclosed, we included in the overall square footage. So access through this piece, and I'm going to point this out a little bit easier. Today, this is the existing building with the little hash marks here. There's a curb cut here on East Cross Street, and there's a little bit of an alleyway with a dumpster shown here. This is existing paved to about this point where the dumpster is, and then it becomes the landscape behind the building. So we're going to propose to continue that as the main point of access to the three bays. That will be used by employees only. It's not intended to be drive-up by customers. The intent is that customers will drive up, use one of the parking spaces, go to the service desk, and then the service attendees will drive it to the back. The curb cut and the gate, you see again that Mr. Hearn referenced was a request by the fire department. It'll be locked. They'll have a box to gain access. It's not the intent of the applicant to use that for anything other than emergencies. The dumpster is pushed, again, further to the end of the new pavement, as shown on the left. The existing fence that you see there that exists today, the white vinyl board fence, will remain, except for one section becoming the gate, but that whole area is intended to be screened as it is now. It's there. For the purpose of the special permit, the plan was simplified. We're aware that there may need to be some additional drainage added for this. I'm sure there'll be a discussion of landscaping at some point as well. So those things, we acknowledge the need for some additional detail there. So this was a first concept for the special permit use to discuss. And I think that's it. I have to answer more questions or clarifying that layout.
Alec, if this was to be approved, there would have to go for site plan with the planning board on this addition?
I'm actually not sure if this would trigger site plan approval.
The size of the addition does not trigger site plan approval, and we're not changing the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, any questions for the engineer? Or we will give it up to the public? Any questions for the engineer?
I'm wondering, do you have a plan that shows the existing structure with an outline of the addition that was put on a couple years ago?
I don't have one here, but I can point it out where the addition is.
Generally, I know.
Yep, this is the new, this is the bump out, really, that we were talking about that's there. The original back, you know, approximated here, right? So this was added there.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, there's none.
Yeah, a little bit of, Ms. Donahue, I'm sorry.
I guess maybe it's a question for the owner. Can you, so this is adding more bay capacity, but we're not adding more parking spaces for people either queuing to wait to access service or to drop off a car and have it serviced? So can you just walk us through a little bit how you're adding capacity in terms of your bay and your maintenance activities? What happens? Is the idea that customers are kind of turning over faster?
Yeah, that's the host.
Yeah. Yeah, if you can just, like, walk us through the need and then the planned operations on the site.
I'm William Murray, owner of Norwood Gulf, 707 Nippon Street. We are hoping with this that we could clear up the parking spaces, because we do see a lot of cars waiting for service, and there are having complaints on the turnover. So we feel like a place extra three bays that we can hopefully clear those up and go from there.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Helen Donahue in District 6. Would the engineer be kind enough to discuss, under the tons of zoning bylaws we have, variance and special set back side gas, rail requirements, parking requirements? Could you please grant us a general discussion about that aspect of the plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that. Those are really more legal questions.
Okay.
We have, let's step back, let's show. We have the zoning schedule.
Yes, it's up in the corner.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, with respect to, this falls under the idea of non-conforming uses under the section 5.0, and it has to do, under 5.3, the board may award special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure. And it also, at 5.2, deals with non-conforming uses. This is really 5.2. The use is non-conforming. The Board of Appeals may award a special permit to change a non-conforming use, only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. The following types of changes to non-conforming uses may be considered by the Board of Appeals. 5.2.1, change or substantial extension of the use, which is what we're dealing with here. The other one, which might relate to some of the historical matters we were talking about earlier, 5.2.2, change from one non-conforming use about earlier, 5.2.2, change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use that is not more detrimental to the character of the district in which it is located than the existing use. So we're here under 5.2.1, a change or substantial extension of the use, we need a special permit to extend this use to make it larger by adding the bays. So in terms of the zoning setbacks and all of that, we have a lot with 34,610 square feet, the proposed building gross square footage will be 5,510 square feet, an increase of 3,365, it is still within the floor area ratio requirements. Our side yard, front yard, the front yard, nothing changes, we're not affecting the front, the rear is still going to be, I'm sorry, side is still going to be conforming. Rear is not relevant in this, because this is a corner lot, so we don't have a rear lot to deal with. Frontage, we have 218, almost 219 feet of frontage, where 90 feet are required in terms of the lot coverage. Presently, 9.7% proposed, 15.9%, still well under the 25% maximum, and the minimum open space, 25% is the minimum open space, we will have still 34.2% of open space, we exceed that, we're not exceeding building height or anything like that. And we conform in terms of the requirements, or we've been given permission with respect to the number of parking spaces, the layout of the parking spaces, the configuration of the individual spaces, and conformance with ADA requirements. So all of that satisfies the requirements. The only thing that is an issue here, that we need relief for, is the, is the use, the extension of the use by the proposed addition of three bays, 5.2.1. I hope that answers the question.
Ms. Donahue, can I ask you a question?
I'm sorry, it doesn't.
There's a follow-up, I'll take it.
In a regular business situation, how many parking spaces would you need for a use the size of that building?
25. Says 20, says required, 27.
27 are required.
And how many do you have?
We have 27.
Where are the two parking spaces?
How many more do you have? How many additional?
We have more than enough. We have more than are required under the body.
That's not my question. What I'm trying to find out is, if this were in, you know, this is in a residential zone, if this were in a business zone, you couldn't open the door unless you had the number of spaces. You have what you're required, and you still need more.
Mr. Chairman, the number of spaces is not a function of what district you're in, it's a function of what uses are being made of a particular site. So whether you're in a residential or commercial district, the question is what use are you making of the site, and how many spaces are required for that use or uses, and we comply on that.
Where do you pick up the two additional spaces?
I can, I can reference.
Yeah, go ahead, where do you pick them up?
That's a nuance of the new survey, Alex, it can, it can pan down. When this new survey was done, the spaces we had spoken about here weren't striped, so if you were to count, if you looked at our survey and count plans, you'd come up with 25. So we had added this, because it wasn't yet striped as proposed when we first submitted this plan, so these are the additional spaces between the 25 and 27.
And we're back to the, could you please show the?
So, hold on, hold on, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, I thought we had three spaces, I thought it was two handicapped and one.
We do, and I apologize for the confusion, because we had submitted this, the issues with the parking came up, and it was acknowledged that we had one additional short-term space on the approved drawing, so those haven't been revised as part of the other approvals from the Planning Board and here tonight, so.
So this will make it 28?
This will make it 28.
So you're gonna have to amend this plan?
Correct.
Show that, okay. Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Donahue.
Could you show the rest of the back of the, the top of the plan on the screen? What makes it difficult, this is a different plan than we've all been using for this discussion, but when we went to the planning board, it was noted that in regard to the decision, 22, I think it was, before, that there were tall trees that blocked the whole thing, and those trees were cut down when in the decision, it was specifically said that they weren't to be cut down. So where were those trees supposed to be?
That's really a planning board question. So, maybe they'll ask this home with at the end here, if she can reference, but that's not up to us regarding the trees, Ms. Donahue, I'm sorry.
I know, we were trying to figure out where the lot is.
All right, Mr. Hearn said he could answer it, so.
We can answer that, those trees were gone long before we went before the planning board, and the planning board in its vote the other night acknowledged that, and agreed that those trees were not part of the site plan approval. They were gone before we came in looking for site plan approval.
Okay, thank you.
And they weren't part of it, they weren't under any restriction, as far as I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, come on up, Ms. Donahue.
My name is Brian Palmetier of 18 Ridge Road, where my wife and I raised our family since 1990. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. I want to thank the many people who have taken time out of their busy lives to be here for, to support, to represent the many others who couldn't be here. I'm here to oppose the proposed expansion of Norwood Gulf at 707 Nippon's Street. Any further expansion that intensifies the commercial use of the property will have adverse social, environmental, and economic consequences for the surrounding single-family residential neighborhood. The following remarks will include my thoughts and those of neighbors who have asked me to share their stories, because some weren't sure they could overcome the anxiety of public speaking. Many have expressed thanks for my willingness to fight the good fight, but other commitments prevent them from attending, including my wife, who has a conflicting special needs advocacy board meeting tonight. I have had the benefit of retirement and continuances to do a deep dive on this subject, which I hope is reflected in my remarks tonight, and many supporting documents that I submitted to the board in advance. My remarks will take a generous 15 minutes, so I hope you'll bear with me. Although there are more than a dozen reasons to reject this application, I have narrowed my remarks to eight key concerns that my neighbors and I think will be more than enough to convince the zoning board of appeals to reject the applicant's request for a special permit. Here are some of our concerns. One, increased commercial activities. Expanding the number of service bays from three to six will substantially intensify the property's commercial use, increasing noise, traffic, and disruption in the area zoned for single-family residences. Several families, particularly those with small children, shared their concerns that doubling the number of service bays will double the already excessive Gulf-related traffic in our neighborhood. At least three people wondered aloud where all the new customers were going to park, since the current parking areas are often already congested with commercial vehicles and unregistered used cars, and one presumes some cars owned by residents. My neighbor, Rich Dalton, who is cultivating his son's ballgame tonight, wants me to tell you about the Norwood Gulf mechanics who test-drive cars on East Cross and Longwood, and stopped next to his stone wall to look under the hood, presumably to diagnose problems. He thought such road tests were supposed to be restricted to Nippon's Street. The original license for a two-pump gasoline station on the corner was granted a century ago, in 1925, and the zoning bylaw granting non-conforming status solely to the corner lot 42 was adopted in 1927, way before the neighborhood was developed. There's your answer to the grandfather question. The first indication I found in the records for the property having more than one lot involved the 1941 purchase of lots 41 and 42 by Fred White. It was not until 1951, as homes were being built in the neighborhood, mine in 1947, for example, that the White family had the foresight and the neighborliness to acquire lots 34 and 35, so a buffer could be maintained between their business and nearby residences. The completed accumulation of land that makes up the current four-lot site, with the undeveloped residential lots 34, 35, and 41, serving as buffers separating the business from the neighborhood homes. This buffer zone served the neighborhood for nearly half a century, until the current owners bought the property from Cumberland Farms and began a series of intrusive expansions. That brings me to the second concern, loss of green space. The tree, the three-lot buffer is long gone, and the project, but the proposed project would eliminate the last remaining grassy lot on the property, add more asphalt paving, and require the removal or relocation of some of the evergreens along East Cross Street. Three, absence of natural screening. Due to the applicant's actions, the neighborhood has been deprived of the natural screen of trees and verdant green buffer lots that once shielded abutting residences from the noise and visual impact of the service station. In 2013 and 2017, the owners cut down healthy, decades-old evergreen trees and replaced the grass with gravel. Despite promises that the trees would be replaced and the yards loomed and seeded, the trees never materialized, and two of the lots are now covered with asphalt. This loss has degraded the neighborhood's character and spoiled its once serene, sylvan beauty. The current fence and approved landscape plan will do very little to remedy this situation. Even if the town's tree warden is consulted, and the planted, and the planted evergreens are of the type that will stay healthy and grow in the existing soil, unlike the dying ones that are there now, they are spaced too far apart to provide an effective future screen. Your packets contain many before-and-after examples to illustrate the difference this has made to the neighborhood's livability and quality. For example, if you consult my document entitled "Norwood Gulf's Missing Evergreens", and examine the satellite images on pages 1, 2, and 3, you will see how the neighborhood has been exposed and degraded. Other views are included in the abbreviated history document in your packets for this meeting, and the PowerPoint presentation I submitted before the March meeting. The applicant's advocate may tell you that the owner was within his rights to cut down those trees. There has been some contention on this point due to the conditions and safeguards governing the landscape established by the zoning board and the selectmen in 1965, 1967, and 1981. Several of the cut-down evergreens were likely among the trees and other plantings that were conditions of the 1965 special permit granted to Gulf Oil Corporation, authorizing construction of the original modest two-bay service station. There are also several zoning boards that seem to have applied, such as 6.4.8 regarding existing vegetation, which stipulates, quote, "Whenever possible, no existing tree of six-inch caliper or greater, or dense hedge row of four or more feet in both depth and height shall be removed unless dictated by plant health, access safety, or identification on the premises, of the premises." The trees didn't impair any access or block any identifying signs, so that leaves plant health. If the applicant tries to tell you that the trees were moved because they were unhealthy, I draw your attention to the visual evidence, including the many photographs I have provided showing the magnificent, healthy trees that used to grace our neighborhood. Other than a few dead limbs that the applicant was required to remove according to bylaw 6.4.9, those trees were fine. Besides, if the trees were taken down because they were unhealthy, bylaw 6.4.9 requires, quote, "Dead plants shall be promptly replaced at the earliest appropriate season," unquote. The applicant was never held accountable for these infractions, and there was no enforcement or fine. Unfortunately, any potential enforcement actions or window of opportunity to provide relief to the neighborhood regarding these requirements appears to have been forfeited when the town approved the new landscape plan in conjunction with the recent parking lot and building expansions. The conditions governing the newer special permits likely supersede the conditions of the former permits. That is, the new landscaping plan effectively absolved Norwood Gulf of any requirement to replace the original stand of trees. That's why I asked you earlier tonight if the request for modification might reopen this issue. Oh, well. By the way, I would love to be proven wrong in this conclusion, I would happily stand corrected if my understanding is inaccurate, and the owners could still be obligated to replace the trees. Of course, if the applicant wanted to be a better, kinder neighbor, they could have voluntarily fulfilled their promise to replace the trees and restore the buffer, perhaps by planting tall evergreen hedge row along the border fence, like that separating our neighbors from Cadillac dealership. To do this now, however, they would need to apply for a revised special permit to augment the recently approved landscape plan. Here's hoping. I included the hedge row idea in a letter of suggestions hand-delivered to Norwood Gulf in March, a copy is in your packets. On page nine of my evergreens document, I've included more hedge examples and suggestions. In a happy coincidence, when asking permission to take one of those hedge photos, I met Dan Drummy of Nippon's Street, the grandson of James Drummy, who was the chair of the zoning board when the 1965 permit was approved, the one with the extensive list of original conditions and safeguards, some of which are delineated in the abbreviated history document in your packets, including the landscape requirements. And while you're on page nine, notice the final photo showing my four-foot, seven-inch wife towering over the sickly, far-apart trees along the East Cross Street fence. Four, adverse lighting in parking. Past expansions eliminated green buffer zones along Ridge Road and behind the building on East Cross, replacing them with a huge asphalt parking lot and an architecturally incompatible building addition, which you've addressed tonight, plus high-intensity lighting around the lot and building. This has affected, this has adversely affected the neighborhood's livability. Without the buffer, there is nothing to block the light and the view of the crowded parking lot. Again, examine the evergreens document pages 4 and 5, where you will find photographic evidence of the harsh, high-intensity lighting suffered by neighbors all night long. Notice in particular the before-and-after differences, and imagine what it's like for neighbors exposed to this. Look at the photo at the bottom of page 1, and notice how the parking lot is lit up like a Providence Highway auto dealership, with the exterior of a next-door neighbor's home aglow in the background. Three of my neighbors mentioned, when I was polling the neighborhood, they mentioned their need for new light-blocking shades or drapes. One mentioned how he can't leave his screened windows open anymore to enjoy the overnight breezes, because the light would keep him up. In a public hearing on June 27, 1967, selectmen granted Gulf Oil Corporation a license to increase underground gasoline storage capacity with contingencies such as shielding of the third light. Imagine that, there were only three lights back then. They also specified that there be no storage of junk or unlicensed vehicles on the property at any time, no sale of automobiles on the premises, and all repairs, quote, "be reduced to those of a direct minor nature," unquote. I could not find anything more on what constituted direct minor repairs, perhaps it's a term of art, and maybe it carries some particular legal meaning, maybe someone can enlighten me. Anyway, I wonder what the 1967 selectmen would think of what's going on there now. Five, architectural incompatibility. The plans presented to the zoning board for the 2023 addition specify that the building would have a brick exterior to match the main building and harmonize with the residential surroundings. You've addressed that tonight. The architectural renderings supplied by the applicant featured a red brick exterior, and the architectural drawings featured the phrase "brick to match existing type." However, the building was constructed with gray, commercial-grade metal siding, which is visibly inconsistent with the character of nearby homes. If plans for the latest proposed expansion are to be believed this time, the building will include more gray exterior, which would add to the industrial look and do further aesthetic damage to the neighborhood's appearance. When the original two-bay Gulf station was approved in 1965, the zoning board and selectmen imposed several restrictions referred to as conditions and safeguards governing the landscaping of the building. These requirements and restrictions were intended to ensure that the property would, quote, "blend and harmonize with the residential surroundings," unquote. The brick building, that brick building is still part of the current structure. The zoning board thought architectural compatibility was so important that it even specified that the exterior was to be, quote, "Oxford Colonial Brick or Equivalent Shade Number 350, Handmade Oversized Colonial by Alpine Brick Company in New Oxford, Pennsylvania," unquote. The goal was to ensure that the neighborhood's residential character was not damaged, so the board insisted that a new building would complement and not detract from the growing neighborhood. I imagine they would be upset to see what has become of the property. Six, negative impact on property values. The current operations and recent expansions have already contributed to a measurable decline in the market value of at least one adjacent residential property. Further expansion would likely worsen this impact on all properties. Ahead of the March CBA meeting, as you know, our former neighbor, retired teacher Elaine Baseman, submitted a description of her unpleasant experience as a backyard neighbor of Gulf. For over a half a century, her home on 250 East Cross Street was shielded and separated from the station by two rows of tall evergreens and a lush green lot, shown on pages 4 and 5 of my evergreens document. While having lunch with me and Jean recently, Elaine described what happened when she put her house up for sale in 2023 before moving to a retirement community in Canton. By that time, the trees were gone, along with the green buffer yard, which had, which had been covered in dirt and gravel, and the rear of the station was visible from her housing yard, showing the unsightly rear of the building with its junk auto parts, 50-gallon oil drums, and other trash and debris. Early potential buyers balked at the unobstructed view of the ugly rear of the Gulf station and the planned addition, some didn't even bother to tour the house and just drove away. Over many months, her house was on the market, Ms. Baseman had to drop her asking price $140,000 before she got a nibble, then another $18,000 to make the sale after the first contingent buyer backed out and construction began. The nice couple who live there now bought the home before Norwood Gulf and out this latest expansion plans. The proposed three-bay expansion will be right next door. Now, check out some of the views of other homes.
You hit your seventh and eighth point, because we're running out of time here.
Well, for example, on page 4 of the evergreens document, notice the daytime and nighttime before-and-after views from my bedroom and family room windows. Which views would you want? Which would you want, which would you value more if you were a prospective homebuyer? And which property do you think would have to be listed at a much lower asking price? Given Norwood Gulf's negative impact already, my wife and I, along with some of our neighbors, have discussed applying for tax abatements, including the woman, the couple at 250 Nippon's Street that I mentioned, whose assessed valuation is actually $66,000 more than the purchase price. price. Approval of the current application would likely make the property values even worse. Seven, lack of community necessity. The proposed expansion does not serve any unmet community needs because there are many auto repair facilities within nearby commercial zones. There is no need to expand within an area zone for single-family residences. In fact, if Norwood Golf did not have the grandfathered benefit of the non-conforming bylaw from 1927, one could not make the case for it existing where it does today. Back in the 1920s, when Norwood residents were driving Model T Fords getting 13 miles per gallon, they were lucky to go 50 miles without having to patch a tire and needed an oil change and lubrication every thousand miles. They must have appreciated the convenience of having a place for fill-up and service when traveling along the old, sparsely populated Naposet Street between Canton and Norwood. Today, on the other hand, with new cars averaging close to 40 miles per gallon and going 60,000 miles on a tire and 5,000 between oil changes.
Can you hit point eight, please, Mr. Fogg? I have other people that want to speak.
Okay. There is no need for a gasoline station to be located outside the commercial zones, especially not in Norwood with its four-mile-long Providence Highway auto mile full of automotive services. Finally, number eight, diminished quality of life. The cumulative effect of these changes and expansions has significantly impaired the neighborhood's residential character and peaceful beauty, reducing residents' enjoyment of their homes and property, and compromised the overall quality of life. The proposed expansion would add to the negative impact. I am sympathetic to the applicant's desire to grow his business. I grew up working in a family-run three-bay service station in Western New York in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, but Norwood Golf is not operating in a commercial zone. The applicant is asking the zoning board to let Norwood Golf expand its facilities, operations, and revenues at the expense of surrounding neighborhood, our property values, and the quality of our lives. Given the adverse effect of past expansions, the absence of green buffers, and the disproportionately negative potential impact of the proposed addition, I and many of my neighbors believe the project's substantial detriment to the neighborhood would far outweigh any possible benefit to the broader community or the town of Norwood. Any relief granted by this board allowing expansion or extension of the business would have substantially more detrimental impact on our neighborhood than existing nonconforming use and would further detract from the character and livability of our single-family residential neighborhood. Two more sentences. Accordingly, we respectfully urge the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals to deny the applicant's request for special permit relief, reject any further additions to the existing building, and disallow expansion of the current nonconforming use of the property of 707 Naposet Street. In support of our argument, I would like to submit these petitions signed this past weekend by neighbors and other like-minded Norwood citizens, and to thank the signers publicly for their support. One of the petitions is 24 signatures from the neighborhood and 31 are from other residents. I also have the supporting document that circulited along with those, the examples of the problems outlined on the cover of the petition, and I have a copy of my remarks for, to give to you also.
Please give those to the clerk. Thank you, sir.
Do you have any questions for me?
Not right now. We have other people that want to speak. Yes, sir, down there, please.
Patrick Colwell, 524 Washington Street. Full disclosure, I'm a part-time resident now in the community, but a lifelong dirt origin generation family here in Norwood. I'm legally involved with the decisions for the original permit, and I sat on this for 27 years and had to deal with Mr. Ajory's dad on a couple of applications. Just briefly, for those in the audience that don't know the Ajory family, Mr. Ajory's father, Gus, has been in that business for 35 years. 35 years at the same property. Kamala and Bob just doesn't sell to anybody. They sold by choice to Mr. Ajory after a number of applicants came forward and asked for, uh, uh, maybe get into process of purchasing. One other thing I want to highlight, though, that the special permit criteria does allow the board to vote for is the overall good to the community does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. The arguments brought forth by the last presenter may be factual in some degree, but I have to say something that a lot of people won't agree with, is that I believe that this town, through a lot of folks that I know, used the golf and have had great experiences with the Ajory family over decades, not just a couple of years, but decades. And I think this is a good reuse of the property or a good expansion of the property. Under one caveat, I will say this, because I was on the board and at town meeting when Jeff Madden was buying up West Water Row and Ernie Park was purchasing Simone's flowers, the struggle was real between the residents and the neighborhoods. If the board does vote for this, I would, I would say to the board and to Mr. Ajory, put up as much buffering as possible, okay, to respect what the last presenter said. And I was an advocate for buffering when an applicant came forward when there was a residential highway business crossover, if you will. He has been a good neighbor from all indications that I've witnessed in my 58 years and know it, and God, I've known Gus for pretty much all of the 35 that he's been down there. And I know reasonable, reasonable people will differ, and I get that, I respect that. But at the end of the day, I don't think this is a money grab. I really don't. I think Mr. Ajory has expanded the business, and he's been a good neighbor, he's a good business person, he's a family man, and I would hope that the board would look upon that because I know a lot of residents in Norwood that are here tonight, just like the last speaker, that are here tonight, that want to be heard, and you can hear it and see it on social media, that they love Norwood Golf. But again, within reason, and if you could get some buffering in there, to put it, you know, mildly, and it might cost you a couple of bucks, then do it, and hopefully the board will see that. Thank you.
Good night, Cheryl.
Cheryl Doyle, 12 Sumner Street. I have a repair automobile repair across the street from me on Sumner. When I bought my house, it wasn't there. It's there now, but this one's a four-bay one, and there were orders of conditions put on this automobile repair. But the thing is, is that they get cars that come in that are broken, and they're offloading them all hours of the night, and I mean all hours. And you can hear those flatbeds because they beat, and they leave their headlights on so it flashes in what was a front bedroom of our house, but that bedroom has been relocated to the rear of the house. We can't open our windows in the front of our house because the noise across the street is just constant. They operate seven days a week, and they operate until nine o'clock at night, but then the cars get offloaded. And I know he's put orders of conditions and restrictions and everything, but my neighbors and I, we have called the police, we have called the building department, and nothing is done. They come out and it's like chit-chat, but then the neighbors have screwed. So if you can, and if you guys end up approving this, like Packie said, get a buffer in there. Somehow it has to be done with noise because I'm going to be straight on it. It does affect your quality of life. I have a great front porch on my house. I can't sit out there in the summertime. I can't use it. It's a waste, yet I'm paying taxes on it.
Thank you. The gentleman next to you.
Steve Esco, District 514, Endicott Street. You know, I, I applied, my wife and I applied for variance back in 1987, but all the zoning board hearings that I've attended have always emphasized the fact that there's got to be hardship. I think there's more of a hardship on the residents than there is for the applicant here. You know, people that are like that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a special permit, so that variance is, hardship's not required in this one. So just ask people, as we're running out of time here, I don't want to shut anyone off, we're probably going to continue this, just specifically talk about Naposet Street. Yes, sir.
And anything in particular that hasn't been discussed already, I would encourage.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
I'll comment on that. So I'm Thomas Egan. I live at 714 Naposet, which is directly right opposite East Cross Street and opposite the gas station, and I support William and his family. I've lived there for 15 years. The house turns out to be from 1820, which was my 13th uncle's house built. And one thing that I don't think has been commented on, A, he's a good neighbor to me. I have daughter and, two daughters and a son, and I don't mind them going over there and using the convenience store. My oldest daughter drives, and I love that he's there and he can take care of her anytime with the car. I also like, since William has bought the property or, you know, taken ownership from his father and made some of these accommodations and upgrades, the security there has improved drastically. So I know the lighting is affecting, I appreciate what my neighbors are saying, but having, perhaps adjusting the lighting in the back or whatever to accommodate those back neighbors, I live right opposite him, and I see the canopy and everything, but the security cameras and the lighting that they have done has reduced the traffic that I used to see that people would park there and there would be, you know, some sort of drug exchange or what. That's not going on. I don't have to call the police anymore. I used to have to regularly call that, and that's like, let's say, 13, 14 years ago. So I appreciate his changes in security that he's done, and I do like the idea of the addition in the back. It will be accessible by only the employees and not the public in general. Maybe it's not three bays. Maybe you say two bays and you say, put a bunch of trees around it to make those barriers that people are asking for, as well as the brick siding. But I do support him. He has been a good business owner to me and my family, and I want to share that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point I made earlier, but this is in fact something that is intuitively obvious to the most casual observer. This is a major change in what this nice little business, I used to use it for service and gas and so on. I just live around the corner from it. But the point here is this is a major change in what is going to go into a residential area affecting a number of neighbors who are not necessarily abutting it, but on the streets around it, and it is changing that neighborhood completely. It's already rather druggly changed. My point would be you can stay where you are and do what you've been grandfathered in or whatever, but this is a whole other ballgame that is being proposed here. It is not necessary for anyone but, I'm sorry, but you. And that's not enough. Actually, I'm not quite done, sir. The point would be that if you left it alone with a couple of minor things, all of the benefits you've been talking about will stay, but will not have an increase in the number of vehicles. If you go from, the number of bays now is six, it's obvious that there's going to be a lot more activity. There will be test runs. Everybody has to test run a car when they get done working on it.
Thank you, sir.
May I leave it at that, please?
The young lady in the back, please.
My name is Lisa Shaw, and I live on 721 Naposet Street, and I've lived here for over 25 years, and I knew Gus, and I've known, I know William and Jenny and the boys, and we've had nothing but a great experience with them, and we support the expansion.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Nobody is castigating the character of the person who owns this business, okay? But the customers may be happy, but do the customers live in that neighborhood?
Yes.
The neighborhood, not all of them.
Please.
Not all of them. And as I said before, it's not fun living next to a business like that. It has destroyed the quality of life.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Gail Ladani, 580 Naposet Street. I know William very well. I take my cars to him. I think he's a great guy, wonderful guy. That's not what this is about. I had a conversation with Will prior to coming here tonight, and I told Will, I'm sorry, Will, I have to go against this expansion. I'm happy for his success with his business as it is. He does a great job. This is not about his character, his family. This is about preserving the neighborhood feel of a single-family residential area. I oppose it greatly. I think that taking down all those trees was a huge mistake and something that can't be easily remedied. And I feel for these neighbors who, I know what they're going through, because we have another fight, and we're not talking about that here.
Thank you.
But I feel what they're going through, and I understand, and I care for Will, I like Will. I don't think his business is going to suffer if he doesn't get these bays. I know that, and I, I hate saying this, but when the signs are out along the sidewalk saying, "Get your car serviced here," accidents happen all the time there because it's too much in-out, in-out going around. We can't see. And again, I hope Will takes care of it when I bring my cars to him, because I still will, but I cannot support this.
Okay.
I must support my, I must support the residents and the single-family residential zone that this commercial property is on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Hale, 583 Naposet Street. I think, I think the traffic's horrendous as it is. I mean, I have to make a left turn to get onto my Naposet extension. And, you know, the Cadillac owes place that presents a lot of traffic, so it's very busy. And the traffic is, you know, everybody must know, on the Naposet Street, it's very heavy. And if I were to go down access, which is across from my golf, I mean, it's horrendous now. I can't imagine what it's going to be like, you know, if this passes. It's just, it's just a mistake. So please take us all into consideration.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Google Meet and, because we're running out of time here. Is anyone on Google Meet that wants to comment on this, please? Try to get right to the point, please, as we have to get out of this building at 10 o'clock.
Okay. Hi, Carrie Barris. I actually have questions.
Name it, name it, address, name it, address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, 576 Naposet Street. I also love the golf station. I love the guys who run it. They're incredibly wonderful. But again, I also agree that this isn't about that. I first want to register my significant concern about the fact that you guys don't have the plans that they're actually trying to get approved. And according to my timeline that I noted, you guys have plans from December of 2024. They revised the plans on February 3 of 2025. They've already had a meeting in March, and it's now May, and you guys don't even have the plans that they're referring to. And that's a concern for me because we just went through a hearing where we had to go back and like agree upon plans that they submitted incorrectly. So the fact that you don't have accurate plans is a huge flag for me for doing an approval tonight. Secondly, I have the 5.2 nonconforming use up on my computer screen, and the only criteria is the impact on the neighborhood. It doesn't even mention in here that you consider the need of the business. The only criteria it mentions for 5.2 is, quote, "Such a change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use." It doesn't ask you to weigh between the business and the neighborhood. It asks you to only consider the neighborhood. So I just want to make sure my understanding of that is right. That's my first question. My second question is, has the traffic study been done based on the need? Have any numbers been put into on the number of cars that are seen daily and the number of cars they will continue to see daily, if there's an increase in business and how that it would impact traffic, or when most of their business occurs? Does that happen in the morning, you do car, often in the morning during rush hour traffic, or do they get dropped off in the middle of the day? Because that feels to me like a really important consideration, right? How that would impact traffic on Naposet, which is already, has grown really hard. I have a question about the height of buildings that they're putting because they're extraordinarily close to that back fence. So if the height of the building is higher than the fence, are the lights going to impact the neighbors more, right? Are we going to have more light pollution in the, in the back? It concerns me again, the lane putting was brought up, but it's not on the plans, right? The engineer who presented the difference in plans and pointed out all the things that are lacking in your plans that you're looking at, mentioned that, well, there's landscaping, but it's not on the plan. So again, another inaccuracy of the plans that you're voting on, and landscaping is one of the number-one concerns of all the neighbors. So that seems to me like a really big concern. And lastly, my question is, why are they asking for a waiver for building plans again when you don't even have the accurate site plans? It feels like there's a lot of unfinished business here for me to make an accurate and good decision to support or not support.
Thank you. Anyone else on Google Meet that want to make their comments? As I said earlier, Mr. Hearn is taking notes so that we can do this in an efficient manner. Anyone else on Google Meet that wants to comment on this plan? Okay, Ms. Holman?
I'll make it as quick as possible. Debbie Homewood, 480 Naposet Street.
Debbie Homewood, 49 Beach Street. Everybody, he's a great guy, again, not the issue. Does it substantially, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? We've, he's already got problems up there. It's a great business. He has rights, the neighbors have rights. It is, there's sidewalk issues, there's traffic issues, there's, he's just outgrown the space. And it is, in my opinion, a great business. We need, we need his business, but he's outgrown his space. And I feel like Boston Providence Highway, where we had the specifics of, is it substantially detrimental to a neighborhood, environmental impact, all of that stuff. Again, great business, but I think those are two criterias that we need to take into consideration. This is why we had that big Boston Providence Highway, trying to keep the commercial away from the residential. We need them both, but I think this is too much in the size space.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'll make it brief, because I don't want to be repetitive. Great business and all, let's not forget that the neighborhood is Route 1 right there, Naposet right there, and Access Road and the airport. People brought up concerns about the lighting, I'm sorry, the noise and whatnot. Yes, it's a residential neighborhood, but we're not in a tucked-away cul-de-sac. I strongly, I strongly hope this gets approved, and that's my opinion, and I don't think it's going to add any additional noise that this neighborhood already does not see. I live on the corner of East Cross and Ridge, so from one end is that side of the gas station we talked about parking, the other side is where the bays were. Again, that's something I think hasn't been brought up, and what's the realistic, I guess, additional noise and stuff this neighborhood is not, is going to see. Doesn't introduce something new, the expansion doesn't introduce something new. It strengthens business that already serves us, it enhances our quality of life, supports local jobs, reflects some values of several self-reliant, community-driven neighborhoods. I don't want to read the whole thing because of time, but that's.
Thank you. You're in favor, but thank you. Chris Donahue?
Thank you. Helen Donahue, District 6. Lighting is a question, a big question that hasn't been discussed, hours of operation. And that includes delivery of oil, of gas, or whatever it is. People being woken up at 2:30 in the morning, that's a violation. They call the town, we need something, we need help with that. And for the existing business, we need the trees back, we need some more trees, just to keep the existing business. All the machine records, get the machine records. This is a mess.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Sheehan.
I'll be quick. I just think you should watch out for the neighbors here. This is, not to say anything, no, everyone's already saying, funny. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. All right.
Introduce yourself.
Joe Sheehan from the planning board.
Joe Sheehan.
I get it covered, Joe.
He's been on the planning board for over how many years?
Oh, okay.
Running out of time. Go ahead, Sarah.
Craig Ricky, 585 Naposet Street, also town meeting member, District 8. The town spent a lot of time redoing Boston Providence Highway, rezoning it. Over and over and over, it was sold to end the disputes between residential and commercial. This business unfortunately is like a little island, and under normal circumstances, a service station is not allowed in a residential neighborhood, which this is, and a, our repair service is not allowed, even if it's all done with inside the building, which this would appear. Right now, this lot is wall-to-wall vehicles. I brought up the issue of a fire hazard, and I don't think the board here has done their due diligence on that, I really don't. You're just like, yeah, it's never happened before.
That's not true, sir. The fire department approved this plan. Well, I just want to, I just want to be on record, the fire department, the fire chief, the fire safety officer, the DPW, and the building inspector, I know you had your opinion, but do not say that this board just blew it off because we checked with our clerk who was at the meeting and confirmed that the fire safety officials for this town had no problem with the way they were set up. Continue, please.
The words I heard was, it's never happened before, so.
No, that was a comment from the board. That was not from the fire safety. Anything else, sir?
Well, my point being is, I'd like some more investigation on that. My concern is that you could have an accident with a car backing into the dispensers. The dispensers have extinguishers under the canopy. The cars in the handicap area do not.
That's not before us. That's already been approved.
Well, it is, it is a part of this construction.
It's not. That's been approved.
And the parking, all these storage is part of this whole problem. And you have a fire that just spreads in a residential neighborhood, that's on you.
It's not on me.
Now, I've said.
Are you a firefighter?
I'm an electrician.
Are you a firefighter?
I know as an electrician, I cannot go into a building.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
And make it less safe.
Yes, sir.
Can't do it.
Thank you, sir. We heard from the fire department, and the fire department said it's safe. Yes, sir. Last speaker.
Joseph Calaby, 739, 741, and 743 Naposet Street. I love William's business, I love his dad's business. Unfortunately, I oppose the expansion of adding three additional bays, two double-deep cars. It's just going to add more traffic on Naposet Street, which I already, I've lived on Naposet Street now for 27 years, 28 years. First at 739, then at 741. I raise my family there. I have issues with the crosswalk that's right in front of the gas station. My wife and my son was in a stroller at the time, almost got hit by a car because people are paying attention to cars pulling in and out of the gas station and not focusing on people that are crossing the crosswalk. So just in that, I think the gas station's already bigger than what it needs to be.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Hearn, you've got a lot to do. I don't think you'll be able to address everything tonight.
There's something, though, that we've, in a press, that is completely inaccurate, if I can speak.
Yes.
And I want to distribute something to the board.
And you're going to be, we're going to continue this.
I didn't think we were going to finish it tonight.
So hit your points.
I will. We have heard, and I have two items to distribute to you. Because we've heard from a lot of people tonight, most of whom don't live anywhere near this property. We've heard from a few neighbors who like the idea and a few neighbors who don't like the idea. But we've also heard some inaccuracies. We've had no accidents at this site, and yet we hear some, oh, there are accidents, you know, and all that. There's a lot of traffic. Of course, there's a lot of traffic. It's a major cut-through from Route 1 to Route 95 into Canton. And I go through there at different times of the day and can be very busy. That's not because of Norwood Gulf, that's because of that street. The plans are on file, and they were up on the screen. So the people are saying the plans aren't with you. They are. The major change in the plans between February and now was that the canopy became part of the building. That's on the plans that you have. So I want to clear that up. We don't have sidewalk issues because, as I told you, we're working toward that issue of making sure nobody goes out onto the sidewalk. We don't have traffic issues. I understand Ms. Mackich does not like her neighbor. She didn't like her neighbor when I became the fence viewer 40 years ago. She didn't, she had that problem. We're not that.
It's 10 o'clock. The building closes at 10.
Wait, just a couple of points. We're not, we don't have the same situation Ms. Doyle has, where she has to call the police and other people. We don't have to call the police about this site. Reference is made to the fact that, by Mr. Eaton, I think that security is better. In fact, security is better because we have to have some security lighting that helps the whole neighborhood. So I just don't want people to be left with the idea that we're doing horrible things. We are not, and we're happy to deal with the rest of it. If I may distribute to the board.
Just give those to, I like to shift, to distribute first.
All right, and I'll tell you, they are letters of support, which I understand may be submitted. People tried to, and they were turned away.
We'll accept them.
And also, these are printouts. Mr. Palmetier has put out a lot of stuff on Facebook. You can read the responses. Most of them are, the vast majority are supportive of this proposal in response to Mr. Palmetier. So we've got a lot more to talk about.
For the next hearing, there is a lot more to talk about. You have your notes, I have my notes. I would ask that you comment on all of them. You'll be given ample opportunity to do that, because there were one thing said this evening. I think you know what the issues are, and unless anyone else says anything.
I don't appreciate being personal.
Sorry. Sorry. I stopped Mr. Hearn when he started making that statement. Dave, Dave, I stopped Mr. Hearn when he turned to you. Yes, Rachel.
I just say, I think we picked this date for a continuance so that all of the plantings could be put in. That doesn't seem to have completely occurred yet.
It would have been, but the weather.
Because of the rain and stuff. So if we could pick a date in which the original continuance was granted would be completed, that would be good. I don't know how much time you would need for that.
But there might be, just to that point.
There might be additional points.
There might be additional plantings from some of the things we heard, but I'm not saying that there is going to be. Well, maybe we shouldn't. Can you, I guess if we meet in June, can you meet all the plantings that were required from site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
We can do that. That's not a problem. And then if more come up, that'd be a question to discuss.
Well, I'm sure the planning board, knowing that two members over here, that they're concerned and they got it right. Okay, is that, that good, Rachel?
Yeah.
And if we could get a copy of that, now that, decision from the planning board, yeah. Al, anything before we continue this?
I'm ready for it.
Shannon, Matt. Okay, entertain a motion to continue this matter to June 3rd, what day in June was it?
Yeah, it is June 3rd.
June 3rd, 2025, 275 Prospect Street, the Norwood Senior Center, also be on Google Meet. Motion by.
Second.
Second, and by Shannon. Al, to continue?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel, to continue?
Yes.
Yes. And I want to thank everyone for being here. This hearing is still open. There'll be time for the petitioner to address the concerns, and we will, if we have new information, we've heard a lot tonight, and I gave Palmetier probably more time than I should have, but he did put a lot of effort into it, so we will have an opportunity to address everything.
Palmetier.
Palmetier, I'm sorry.